Welcome to these meetings of Dundee City Council, which are being held remotely in terms of Section 43 of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meetings which are being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the meeting chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the Committee Services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on, your face will then appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the meeting chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the meeting chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the meeting chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, these are still formal meetings of the committees concerned and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any questions regarding this procedure? There are no questions, convener, so I will now ask the Committee Services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thanks Roger. Convener?
Present.
Councillor Alexander?
I'm here.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell?
Present.
Councillor Cordell?
Present.
Councillor Dawson?
I'm here.
Councillor Flynn?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Lynn?
Apologies from Councillor Lynn.
Thank you. Councillor Randall?
Sorry, evening, I'm here.
Bailey Roberts?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Rome?
Good evening, present.
Bailey Sawyers?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short?
Here.
Councillor Smith?
I'm here.
Bailey Keenan?
Present.
We've had apologies from Councillor Crookshank. Councillor McCready?
Present.
Councillor McIrvin?
Present.
Councillor Malone?
Present.
Councillor Mara?
Present.
Councillor Richardson?
Present.
Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey Scott?
Bailey Scott will be joining us just a wee bit later.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hay?
Present.
Councillor Scott?
And I'm here.
Bailey MacPherson?
A good evening, present.
Councillor Duncan?
Here.
Lord Provost Borthwick?
Present.
Councillor Murray?
I'm here.
Councillor Ross?
I'm here.
Mrs Leck?
Present.
Mr Baxter?
Evening.
Miss Barclay?
Aye, I'm present.
Mr Anderson McGinnis?
Present.
Would councillors, sorry, would members please note that linked to item two on the agenda, Mrs McBean and Mrs Javid are also in the meeting? Thank you.
No, thank you Arlene. Just go on to the first item please.
Okay, item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Okay, don't see any indications.
Okay. We've received a deputation request in relation to item four on the agenda. Do you agree to hear it?
I actually do agree to hear it. I just wonder for the benefit of the committee, would it be better to do item two first, which is introducing the new parent and religious representative to the committee first and then move on to deputation, just so that I think the new members are formally on the committee before we move on to items of business? Would that be acceptable?
Okay, so item two, parent and church religious representation on the Children and Family Services Committee, this is for approval.
Okay, so just want to welcome both Tara and Margaret to the committee. Looking forward to your contributions and please don't be afraid to put your hand up and speak. We certainly want to hear your contributions, so welcome to you both to the committee and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Arlene, I think we can now move on to the deputation now. Apologise for jumping in and changing that for you slightly there.
No, that's fine. So item four, do you agree to hear the deputation?
Yeah, I think everybody was nodding before that, so yes, happy to hear the deputation. So it's Councillor Angus Forbes from Perth and Kinross, the speaker on item four. You have been to this committee before, so you do know the procedure. However, I will just remind you that you will have seven minutes. I will give you about a minute, a warning with about a minute left of that seven minutes and after that you may have questions from members. Okay, there's somebody in the chat saying they're here for deputation two. I'm not sure if that's for this item or for another item later on on the agenda.
That's for later item, convener.
Right, thank you. So Mr Stewart who put up, indicated you're here for deputation, you're here for, yeah, the low emissions zone, so that'll be later on in the committee. This is just for the Children and Families Committee. But Councillor Forbes, I'll hand over to yourself.
Thank you, convener, and evening councillors. It's almost eight. Came to talk to you about this matter and what a difference the last two years have been for us all. So you'll be pleased to hear, convener, I won't be taking anything like seven minutes and I'm fairly confident you won't even have to give me a warning at six. I'd just like to thank you, convener, for engaging with me and my constituents over the process and over the last couple of years and for your efforts to find a workable solution, working alongside Perth and Kinross council. And also want to thank your officers who worked away behind the scenes to find a pragmatic and sensible solution to this issue and for the recommendation that it should be accepted tonight. Appreciate that simply a recommendation at this stage, but I do want to urge you all to accept this proposal. Not only will this solve a problem for my constituents, but will provide financial support for your plans to extend Harris. And as you know, convener, Invergarry children have contributed greatly to Harris over the decades, long-term friendship.
Sorry, get myself off, Councillor Forbes, unfortunately you've frozen there. I'll give it a couple of seconds for you to come back. So Councillor Forbes is leaving. Hopefully he'll come back in, so as he's the only deputation, I would just want to give a couple of seconds just to let him come back in. So just colleagues, just be a bit patient with us for two seconds while they try to get the technology working. Okay, Councillor Forbes, is that you back in?
Yes, that was embarrassing. I've been on a Teams meeting the entire day and I think my computer is as tired as I am. So I'm really sorry, I'll get back straight into it. And you may well have to warn me my time, my time. I think-
Just keep going, say.
Thank you. I think I'd go to the point of saying that Invergarry children have contributed greatly to Harris over the decades. Long-term friendships have been formed between children on both sides of that line that you may remember I spoke about last time I spoke to you. And to conclude, to close, convener, I just urge you all to vote to accept this arrangement. Let my constituents continue with their education at Harris and I am happy to take any questions if there are any. Thank you very much for your time.
No, thank you, Councillor Forbes, and certainly thank you for, you said at the start, you know, we have met a couple of times and I've met with some of the young people from Invergarry, so I do appreciate your time as well and obviously support your constituents as we try to find a solution to this. I'm just looking and I don't see any indications that anybody has any questions, so I would take that and run if I was yourself and but thank you for your contribution and I think we'll just move straight on into the item, Arlene.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so that's item four, realignment of feeder primaries and primary catchment areas of Cluster Schools Associated Harris Academy, outcome of the formal consultation process.
Okay, so the first one I saw was Bailey MacPherson.
Thanks very much, convener, and grateful to Councillor Forbes for his deputation tonight. I agree with him. I think the pupils from Invergarry and Congoody and across the boundary in Perth and Kinross have contributed greatly to the successes of Harris Academy over the years, as indeed have the parents. We've had members of the Parent Council and indeed a former chair of the Parent Council from the Invergarry area. So I greatly welcome this outcome. My question really is around the delegated powers that will be given to legal officers. I've raised this at a group leaders' meeting before, so the officers are aware, I'm not coming up this without any forewarning. And my question's really around protection on both sides, as it were. The capital contribution from Perth and Kinross in relation to the extension is very welcome. But I suppose what I'm really asking officers is what mitigations we can ensure that protect both parties? So for example, let me give you an example of what could possibly happen. At the moment, given the size of the proposed extension and the current role at Invergarry Primary School, bluntly, I don't think there's any problems in relation to size in the foreseeable future. But what if, for example, our neighbours changed the boundaries, the catchment area of Invergarry Primary School, for example, and that brought in a huge load more pupils and that put pressure on Harris? I'm just really wanting to see that officers are aware that we ensure that we have proper mitigations in place on the part of both parties to ensure that we don't store up a problem, which might not happen in the next decade, but could happen in the next, you know, two or three decades, if you see what I mean. And I'd be grateful for officers, just reassurances in that regard.
No, thank you for that phrase there. Mr Clancy, are you happy to answer this?
Yeah, I'm happy, convener, to try and do that. And just to give Bailey MacPherson the assurance that, as the report indicates, a legal agreement would be entered into and I think the report highlights the areas that that would cover and there may be other areas that we need to add. That will have to be done through discussion, but it is quite clear that there will have to be provisions in there to ensure that there's no risk of the school going over capacity by the changes. The example that he gives is a very good one. That's something we would have to build into the legal agreement and I'm happy to provide an assurance, these things have already started to be discussed with Perth and Kinross between the legal teams and that's something that would be fully bottomed out within the legal agreement before we were actually able to make progress. And that's why we're asking for the delegated authorities so we can go on and do that.
Yeah, I'm very grateful for that. I think it's just important, and it's not just on the part of Dundee City Council, but obviously on the part of Perth and Kinross council as they are putting in a substantial capital contribution. So I'm grateful for that. I think we all have a lot of confidence in our own legal team and I'm sure Angus has in his and Perth and Kinross. So grateful for that reassurance and very happy to see this report coming forward. Thanks, convener.
No, thank you, Bailey MacPherson. So the next one I have on my list is Councillor Malone.
If Bailey MacPherson hadn't asked that question, I would have been asking a very, very similar question. Obviously, we'd like to welcome the paper. I think it's looking to resolve a situation that we've been looking at time and time again. But I think with Bailey MacPherson, I'd like a reassurance that the new school capacity will be sufficient to meet the needs of the catchment area into the future and maybe there's an opportunity for officers to give us an indication of what consideration and calculations are being made currently about the future demands on the school and how these can be met within the paper that's been put forward.
Okay, I'll pass over to Mr Clancy again.
Thanks for that question, Councillor Malone. It's an important question and the consultation report does outline the calculation that's been done to try and provide that reassurance. It also provides previous calculations that were done on Harris capacities between 2015 and 2022 and it provides the actual return on that to let you see how close the actual projections were and they were very, very close indeed for that last seven-year period. With the 11:40 fully in place, we are now able to project even further than we were before because we know who the children are, a high, very high percentage of them that are in schools and where they are actually in schools at three-year-old. And therefore we have projections now up to 2027. So that's as far as we can actually project based on the role and these projections would indicate that the changes that have been proposed for Harris Academy would give us more than enough space to deal with all the priority one pupils and leave some room for expansion. And that includes houses being fully built on all the areas that have been identified in the asset register. So again, and that wouldn't be anticipated, that they would all be built, but even if they all were built, it covers everything and does give some headroom. So the calculations have been taken forward as far as we possibly can. We've also been working with Perth and Kinross to look at their projections and again, that has all been built into it. So we're confident that this extension will provide more than adequate capacity to cover what we can see the short, medium and into the longer term for Harris. Now, there's never any guarantee once you move on 15 years, what that population is going to look like, but based on everything we know, this will be more than sufficient to meet needs of the school.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, so I think the next person I had was Mr Baxter.
Thank you very much, convener. The first thing that I'd like to do is just remind the committee about promises that have been made by this committee to other schools within the city, especially those that are within the category C. And I know that we've got a proposal, we're in the works of building a school for Craigie and Brave You, but I think I'd like to go back and just make sure that this committee is aware to the commitment of making sure that those schools, right, are still fit for purpose, they're still category C schools and still require money spent on them to make sure that they're operational. Looking at the paper, I think I've got a question on 5.6 and it's to do with the additional costs that are going to be borne by Dundee City Council. Now, there's an estimate of £45,000 to £50,000 per annum in terms of operational costs, but there's also going to be potentially staffing costs that come from an additional school role, which would have an impact on additional staffing, which then have an impact on job sizing because your category A data for job sizing is going to increase. Do the officers have an estimate in terms of what they see is going to be the impact on the revenue budget of potentially the increase in the job sizing and how that's going to be borne out in the revenue budget?
Yeah, sorry, I'll bring Mr Clancy to answer your second point in a second, but just to give that reassurance that certainly we haven't forgotten about other schools in the city and there will be a report, I think, at some point, if not this year or certainly start of early next year, certainly next school year, looking at the school estate. So we certainly are still looking at that and are still committed to that. But I'll ask Mr Clancy to answer your second point.
Thanks for that, convener, and thanks for the question, Mr Baxter. And just to confirm what the convener said about your first point, we obviously have a plan in place for schools in terms of a capital programme to make sure they're fully maintained, wind and water tight and sufficient to offer the best education that they can, depending upon their age. And that's why these buildings are tired and do need to be replaced, but happy to give you an assurance that these buildings will be maintained to a good standard to allow pupils to receive the best education that we can provide them. In terms of your second question, I think in five, six, we outline the operational costs that are known, which would be your utilities, your cleaning and any additional cost for rates. There's no mention of staffing there because our staffing changes across the city every year, depending upon the pupil role. There's adjustments made to the staffing formula, some schools get more staff, some schools have slightly less. It just depends on the pupil role and we don't actually know what the pupil role in Harris is going to be, but we have projections of what it could be, but that will be determined by whether there's new houses built, to some extent what placing requests are made, for example. So therefore, it's not possible to predict that absolutely. What I can give you an assurance of is we do operate this staffing formula and as the pupil role increases, the staff have to increase proportionally through our formula to make sure that we're able to deliver the education that we need to. And that would include job sizing based on all the provisions that are already set out and that you're very familiar with and that we work through regularly when there's any changes to what's going on. So happy to provide that assurance that although this isn't mentioned, it's because staffing changes almost annually in Dundee, just depending upon what the school role is. But happy to clarify that, yes, as that role increases, there will be more staff that will come into Harris and that may have an knock-on effect on job sizing and the evaluation posts, but we'll be carrying that out under existing procedures that are well established in the council.
Okay, you happy with that, Mr Baxter?
Thank you, convener.
Yeah, no problem. So the next one I have is Councillor Mara.
Thanks, convener. I mean, just Councillor Malone's made some of these points already, but Labour's been consistent on this for 30 years now in terms of access from Invergarry for pupils who should not suffer because the Tories tried to gerrymander the boundaries of local government in the 1990s. They shouldn't have to travel and I'm sure Mr Councillor Forbes would agree with me on that basis, you know, that these decisions hadn't been made the way they were, then we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight. So we support the idea of making sure those kids can continue those relationships that they have and the contribution that they make to our community. But frankly, finding ourselves in this is a total shambles, you know, beggars' belief that we're actually in this situation. It was, all of this was entirely predictable and frankly predicted. You know, the consequences of closing Minas Hill High School and the knock-on effect on the communities right across the west of the city has been absolutely clear since the outset. And we find ourselves here tonight and I've got several questions to ask about that, but you only have to look at the consultation, the answers that our pupils, parents and teachers have given on these issues, the huge range of concerns that they have and frankly, the many unanswered questions that they've posed in these meetings that they're yet to get any answer to from education staff or from this administration. So it goes back, but what we're in a situation now is that we have to make do with a very flawed decision that was taken years ago now to close Minas Hill High School. So my questions, some of them have been asked already, I think Mr Baxter's points in terms of the fact that we are absorbing long-term revenue costs for this question as the city are well made and that will continue to be a concern. I have a concern about the size of communal areas within Harris in terms of dining facilities, with assembly rooms, with corridors. We already know there's an extremely high maintenance bill on Harris because it's a very intensively used building already, let alone with the 25% increase in the school role that we're about to see. So what extra provision for communal areas will there be rather than just the addition of classrooms? And what assessment has been made in terms of the longer term increase on this school role that we're now looking at on the surrounding area and what mitigation is going to be put in place for that? If kind of answered to those questions, I might have some more.
Yeah, I think I'll pass over to Mr Clancy. I think Mr Clancy's already answered your second question quite fully when he responded to, I think, Councillor Malone, but I'll pass over to Mr Clancy. You're still on mute, Paul.
Apologies. Thanks, Councillor Mara, for the questions. Hope I've covered the one about the, certainly wouldn't have any further to add in terms of the calculations and the projections, how they've been done. In terms of the communal areas, the sixth classroom extension does have some communal area built into it and when the calculation was made for the space, the totality of the space in the school, the dining accommodation, the toilets, the circulation space was all calculated in determining the new school role. So that's actually been taken care of when the calculation is made, what the new school role would be. I have no doubts that any school that's operating to capacity operates full and therefore it's, there needs to be certain routines that are put in place to make sure that dining can be accommodated. It's not straightforward if you've got a school that's half-empty. But that works very well in Harris and we're assured by the management team there that provision would be placed to accommodate the extra pupils if and when they actually arrive. But the actual calculation of the space, the toilets, all the stature requirements was done when the new role was calculated based on the extension. The final comment we'd make in terms of absorbing long-term revenue expense is that obviously as the Invergarry pupils, the Perth and Kinross pupils stay in Dundee, there's a per capita element that's added to the GAE that comes to Dundee City Council. And Bailey Keenan has mentioned this several times, the need to keep young people in Dundee because it does actually reinforce the budget that comes. So there is budget that comes from Scottish Government centrally to support the total number of young people and Dundee would continue to benefit from that revenue because the Invergarry pupils would actually remain in Dundee. So it does mitigate against some of the costs.
Okay, Councillor Mara?
Thanks, convener. I mean, I have my doubts frankly, Mr Clancy. I mean, you will have had the numerous complaints as all councillors representing the wards on which this school draws about how overcrowded the school can be, how busy it can be, particularly in the communal areas. I mean, I see Mr Baxter nodding vigorously. There are somebody who has members working in the school and I believe teachers in the school as well. Is that correct? Yes. So it is incredibly busy school already. We know that. And we know from what you're describing is that there's going to be no relaxation on those through any extra facilities, you know, within those core communal facilities that are needed. And I have real concerns about that, I have to say. You know, we're in a situation where we had a brand spanking new school and now we're having to retrofit it and make do due to a catastrophic failure in strategic planning. And I think that the administration should hang their heads in shame on that. I have an amendment that I would move after the questioning, if that's okay, convener.
Yeah, absolutely. Just, I think there's just one more member which is to come in. So I don't know whether, well, that is being done, whether Committee Services could share Councillor Mara's amendment. Councillor McCready, you're the last person before we move to the amendment.
Thanks very much, convener. A lot of the questions I would have asked have already been asked, but I mean, I think it's, it's important to note that, you know, we have taken a long time to get here to a point where, you know, that we should have been at, I think, at the very start of looking to get a facility for Harris Academy for pupils in the west of the city that meets their needs, that meets the needs of the community. So it's good, it's good that we're making some progress on that. I would share many of Councillor Mara's concerns that, you know, opportunities were missed when the closure of Minas Hill High School was put through this committee. But, you know, I take the point that we are where we are. However, you know, I think, hope people will learn some lessons from that and it is good that in terms of this, we are listening to what local people are saying beyond council and pupils and much of the community in the area. I've got one question about the proposed building that will go on. So I'm looking for information about how the current school can continue to operate safely at a time when major construction will be going on around the school. I think I'd be looking for reassurance that this can be done safely for the pupils, for the staff at Harris Academy, for construction workers who are involved and importantly also for members of the community in the west end of Dundee. That, you know, I think it's important that, you know, I understand that the proposal will be that the school will continue to operate, but it's, you know, really important that we take the safety of all the folk who will have anything to do with Harris Academy and who will be in the surrounding area very seriously. So if I could get some reassurance that some thought has been given to that and that officers and perhaps even yourself, convener, are convinced that this can be done in a way that will be safe for the broader community. Thanks.
I'll bring off this in a second, just to say that this isn't the first time that we've done a building either next to or part of a school. So, you know, we are well aware of making sure that it's safe for anybody who's accessing the building and in the surrounding area. So absolutely give you that reassurance. But Mr Clancy, do you want to add anything?
Just to reflect further on what you said yourself, convener, and to provide Councillor McCready- and to provide councillor McEady with the reassurance he requires. I've actually spoken to councillor McEady about this on the phone. But just to say that at a very early stage, before we actually took this concept any further in discussion with Perth and Conroth, that discussion was had as to whether or not the small extension could be done without a decant and it could be done safely. And that had to be agreed before we actually went any further. And I am assured that that can be done. I'm not saying it's simple. You've got to actually watch and plan very carefully. Whenever you've got any construction going on around pupils, it needs to be careful planning. But there's two full years projected that will be required to put that small extension up. And part of the length of time that that's taken is to allow the works to be programmed in such a way that there's absolute safety for the young people, the staff and the community as the building progresses.
Thanks, convener. Thanks to Mr Clancy for that.
Okay, so we now have, move on to the amendment. So I'm just going to ask Mr Many regarding the amendment because I'm struggling to see the relevance to the report we have in front of us. So Mr Many, is there anything you can give me some assurance regarding the amendment? Looking for Mr Many or one of the legal officers to help me here.
Can you hear me now, convener?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Roger.
Just to confirm, convener, that the final decision on relevancy rests with yourself. I think the question for you is whether or not the amendment that's been moved by councillor Mara has a sufficiently close connection with the recommendations in the report, particularly the recommendations regarding Invergowery High School, Invergowery Primary School, rather.
Okay, so thank you, Mr Many. So I am struggling to see the relevance of this to this report. If anything, this amendment should have gone forward when we discussed the Western Gateway several months ago. That would have been, I think, a relevant amendment on that night to discuss what happens with Western Gateway. I'll bring you in in a second, councillor Mara. So I am really struggling to see the relevance of this. I think this is something that perhaps the Western Gateway, if they haven't already done, the Western Gateway community should, sorry, I accidentally put myself on mute there, should certainly have those discussions with Perth and Conroth. They may already have done. And there might be a process there, but certainly I'm struggling to see the relevance to Harris Academy with regards to your amendment. But I'll let you speak to councillor Mara.
Thanks very much, convener. I appreciate that. I mean, I think there's two reasons that I would say that it's relevant. One, the overall headline is about the realignment of feeder primaries and catchment areas across the west of the city and questions about where these young people go and to which schools that they're moving into. I think that it's a reasonable question that it be aligned to this. The other side of it is in terms of this outbreak of joint working with Perth and Conroth as indicated in the report that we're just seeing. You know, we're obviously in a negotiation in terms of where pupils go in terms of this area and this kind of relationship. I think it's the right thing to do that we actually have this considered. You know, there are young people in the west of the city who are being asked to travel five miles to a different primary school. So at this moment, we're in a process of negotiation, active negotiation with Perth and Conroth. I'm just asking that this be put on the table. You know, that this be a kind of a constructive suggestion that we can work with Perth and Conroth Council to see whether they can reserve spaces to make sure that these children don't have to travel five miles in the intervening years before the primary school, as we all hope it's going to open in 2025. I think it's a really reasonable and practical request of officers, convener. And I think it's as part of those ongoing discussions when we're talking about school estate with Perth and Conroth, I do think that it's relevant. So if members would like to have the opportunity to have their say on it, I think that would be an important thing. And I've had considerable amount of representation from members of the public in my ward on this basis.
Okay, I'm going to bring Mr Clancy in for a question because my recollection is that through the whole Western Gateway process, we've been having those discussions with both Perth and Conroth and Angus Council about where the young people in the Western Gateway go to. So I don't know, Mr Clancy, if there's anything that you wish to add?
We have had quite wide discussions with Perth and Conroth and Angus about how we can best accommodate or make arrangements or information available for Western Gateway families who are making placement requests to Perth and Conroth and to Angus. And this is one of the areas that we've actually touched on. My understanding here is that there's a legal issue with this in that for Perth and Conroth to reserve any spaces, they would need to conduct a formal consultation and change the catchment area for Invergowery. So this is a matter that would be for Perth and Conroth Council. Because you can't actually, Mr Many can maybe help me here, but you can't actually just yourself make a decision on new provisions for entry to a school. That's a matter of public consultation under the 2010 Act. So there would be a requirement for public consultation. The second concern I would have is that even if that were the case and they were to consult and change the catchment area for Invergowery, at that point there, Western Gateway would have access to Harris Academy as a priority one school. And the whole point of this consultation was to try and remove pressure from Harris Academy. So for me, I'm not certain what we would gain. We've had these discussions around this, but this is a matter for Perth and Conroth. It would be a matter for formal public consultation. And that would have to be a decision for them. But maybe Mr Many can help me out here if I've got that wrong.
Okay, Mr Many.
Thanks, convener. Just to confirm that arrangements for the placement of children at Invergowery Primary School are certainly a matter for Perth and Conroth Council. My understanding of councillor Mara's amendment is not that he's asking that this should necessarily happen, simply that discussions should take place. And on that basis, I think I would leave the field clear for Perth and Conroth to make their own decision on it. If it was the committee's decision tonight, the question should be asked of them in the first instance.
Okay, so my view is that we are already having these discussions about the Western Gateway and they continue with both Perth and Conroth and Angus to ensure that young people who live in the Western Gateway have access to as close a school as they possibly can while we are going through the process of trying to build them a school in that area. So while I understand exactly what councillor Mara is saying, my feeling is that this is something that we are already having discussions with. Now, whether Perth and Conroth want to continue with that, that is a matter for Perth and Conroth, whether they want to change their boundaries. And that's something I think the Western Gateway community should speak directly to Perth and Conroth themselves. But I am at the moment struggling to see the relevance and the merit of the amendment with regards to this item. Councillor Ross, I see that you have indicated you wish to come in.
Yeah, thank you, convener. Never did I think I would ever find myself in the position that I'd be aligned with councillor Mara in the council chamber. But I do feel at the mo, I mean, obviously we've heard from Mr Clancy and it's not as simple as just asking another local authority to realign their catchment areas or whatever. But I don't think that's, the amendment is really quite simple. And all it asks is to have a conversation about it. And it may well be that as a result of that conversation, that what Mr Clancy has predicted comes to bear. However, I don't think that should really stop us having the conversation and, you know, showing some willing to at least think about the situation with Western Gateway and the future of Harris Academy. And to me, it seemed like, you know, we don't know what the result of that conversation would be, but to me, it seemed like it would make sense just to have the conversation because it looks quite obvious to me that that's something that we would do. Obviously, I don't know if that's going to go ahead. I'm just putting my opinion in there that I think perhaps it would have been worth considering being willing to have that conversation. But like I said, it's, you know, it's not my decision solely to do that. I just would like to say on record that I think we should be willing to have that conversation with Perth and Conroth.
Thank you, councillor Ross. Mr Clancy, can you remind me? We have had conversations with Perth and Conroth about Western Gateway and Invergowery, haven't we?
Yeah, we've had ongoing conversations with Perth and Conroth about, with officers with Perth and Conroth about different, lots of different options for Western Gateway and Invergowery Primary School, including catchments, et cetera. So these discussions have been had over quite an extended period of time.
Okay, councillor Mara, I'll let you back in. I mean.
I do appreciate it, convener.
I was just going to say, I will be flexible here, but I do think the question that you've asked has already been asked of Perth and Conroth by ourselves. Is it worth doing it again? I don't know. But I'll bring you in and then we'll take it from there.
I would say that it is worth doing it again, convener. And I think it's worth the committee saying that we want it to happen in terms of that conversation to happen. I'm not prejudging the outcome of that conversation. I know there'll be very detailed reasons and kind of resource constraints and considerations to have. But I would really think that it's, given the representations I've had from members of the community, it would be good to see the committee consider this tonight. And so I would, you know, really ask you to put it to the vote or to put it forward or to agree it. Because I think that making sure that the committee has a voice in this and asks Mr Clancy and his officers to go away and actually reinvigorate that discussion, put it to them again and put it on the table. That's what local people are asking for. They're not asking for it to be judged in full, but I think it's a reasonable question to be put.
Okay, Bailey Soares, you wish to come in?
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. Perhaps I've not been following this as closely as I should have been, but I do seem to recall earlier councillor Mara making great play of the fact that the Harris communal areas were overcrowded, problems with assembly areas, problems with dining halls. Yet if I'm reading his amendment correctly, what he's saying is that down the line, as Mr Clancy's referenced, if pupils are given status to go to Invergowery Primary, the den of category one status for Harris, and in due course, Harris would become even more crowded. So perhaps I've picked this up wrong, convener, but I do seem to feel that there's a certain lack of logic in the argument that's being put forward by councillor Mara. Thanks.
Thank you, Bailey Soares. Bailey Scott. I don't know, Bailey Scott, you having problems coming off mute?
Yeah.
Yeah.
My system tonight. Sorry about that.
Don't apologise, it's fine.
It was just to say I have no issues whatsoever with the amendment from councillor Mara. I think it's quite reasonable to formalise the fact that we're having conversations with Perth and Conroth Council about the children who live in the Western Gateway. And I think we owe it to the families that live in the Western Gateway. They have been down a few times to speak at deputations at our committee. And we've been very slow in responding to that or bringing things forward. We're now at a position where we're putting something in place. But I think we owe it to the parents of the Western Gateway to allow this amendment to go forward so they can see that corporately the council has taken the decision that we're going to get engaged in conversation with Perth and Conroth Council.
Yeah, councillor Malone?
Yeah, I think this will be another first for councillor Ross because we seem to be on the same page as both myself and councillor Mara. I think that there's nothing, I think Bailey Scott hits the nail on the head. There's nothing unreasonable about what's being requested. It's a request to have an ongoing dialogue between the various stakeholders that are going to be involved in future planning for pupils going to Harris Academy. And I think that, I did mention at the start how the report was welcome, but I did point to the fact that there has been quite a lot in the consultation period and consultation process, quite a lot of negative feeling has been built up during the process as we move from Minas Hill to the opening of Harris and to some of the issues that councillor Mara raises. So I think that it's absolutely reasonable that we say to the stakeholders involved, we are going to be carrying on this consultation and we're going to have the consultation with the communities on an ongoing basis and we're going to have that conversation. I'm sure Perth and Conroth would actually welcome those ongoing conversations. So with Bailey Scott and with councillor Ross, I think that there's nothing wrong with putting this forward. I think it's perfectly reasonable and there is never an occasion where you have too much consultation or communication. So I just think we should let this go forward. I certainly support the amendment.
Okay, Bailey McPherson, I see that you want to come in. I'm going to make you the last person to speak on this.
Okay, thanks, convener. My point will be brief. I don't think any reasonable person would say that there shouldn't be conversations between local authorities and therefore I have no particular problem with a further discussion with Perth and Conroth. But let's be blunt, be careful what you wish for. Because the whole point of the agreement between Perth and Conroth Council and ourselves is to ensure that we don't have continued pressure in relation to the size of the school for pupils who currently have a priority one status for Harris Academy. You'll recall when I asked the question about the legal agreement, I made the point that should Invergowery Primary School's catchment area be changed? And that therefore increases the pressure on Harris Academy. We've not exactly achieved what we wanted to achieve, which is to ensure that we've got Harris Academy that is fit for purpose in terms of the size available. So I have no problem, I have no problem with the discussion. But I question why Perth and Conroth Council would want to start changing their boundary, which might then have impact on the capacity of Dundee City Council to continue to take Perth and Conroth pupils into Harris. What we have at the moment is what I think we would all agree is a good solution. But as I say, I have no problem with the conversation. I just don't think it'll lead anywhere.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. And I certainly share a lot of what you've just said. And I think we are just slowing up issues for the future. However, what I'm going to suggest is, Mr Clancy has already made it clear that we already will be having continuous discussions with both Perth and Conroth and Angus Council regarding placement of young people in the Western Gateway until the Western Gateway Primary School is built. I have no issue with having those conversations, asking about whether Invergowery would potentially take any of those young people. And I think that would be a reasonable compromise on how we're moving forward. But actually, we just continue those discussions until the Western Gateway Primary School is built and continues discussions with Perth and Conroth and Angus about how and where will young people go. Would that be acceptable to the committee?
To, convener, I'd like to move the motion. I think it's important that it's set down in black and white, what we're intending to do in putting this to officers' name. And that's the business of the committee to put this in place. So if I can, I would move the motion. If somebody would second me.
Convener, happy to second that. I'm listening to what you're offering as a compromise and think there is very little between it, as a sort of nitpicking on words of, you know, and fail to see the direction of travel that you're going in with keeping the conversation up or making it formal. So I support the motion. I think we've listened to people from the Western Gateway that have had real concerns about the distance to travel to another school. We've agreed that a new school needs to be built there. And we look towards working in partnership with our neighbouring authorities to see if there's a closer compromise. So I haven't got an issue with it at all and I hope that you wouldn't either. So quite happy for it to go to the vote.
I do think it's, I do say, Bailey Keenan, if you think that we're not that far apart, then perhaps you should just support my suggestion rather than the amendment. I don't see, you know, why the idea that we are continuing to have those dialogues with both Perth and Conroth and Angus for the young people is any way different from the amendment that councillor Mara has put forward. I don't particularly want to see it go to the vote, but if that's what we're going to have to do, do I have a second there?
I'll second you.
Thank you. Okay, Arlene. Sorry, before you do that, Arlene, Mr Many wishes to come in.
Thank you, convener. Can I just clarify that the motion in your name seconded by councillor Smith is approval of the recommendations in the report?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, Arlene.
Okay, thank you. The motion by the convener, seconded by councillor Smith, is approval of the recommendations in the report. The amendment by councillor Mara, seconded by Bailey Keenan, is circulated. Convener.
Motion.
Councillor Alexander.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Profess Campbell.
Motion.
Councillor Cordell.
Motion.
Councillor Dawson.
Motion.
Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Rendall.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Bailey Soares.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor McEady.
Amendment.
Councillor McIrvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
Amendment.
Councillor Mara. Councillor Mara.
Amendment.
Councillor Richardson.
Amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
Councillor Hay.
Amendment.
Councillor Scott.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
The motion.
Councillor Duncan.
Motion.
Lord Profess Bothwick.
Motion.
Councillor Murray.
The motion.
Councillor Ross.
Amendment.
Mrs Lake.
Amendment.
Mrs McBean.
The motion.
Mr Baxter.
Amendment.
Ms Barclay.
Amendment.
So that's seventeen for the motion, fourteen for the amendment, so the motion is carried.
Okay, thank you. We want the next second please.
All right, we'll go back to item three on the agenda, which is proposal to move Monday, the 30th of May, 2022, school holiday to Friday, the 3rd of June, 2022, to mark Platinum Jubilee. This is for approval.
Okay. Don't see MD wishing to come on this. Is this approved? Okay, that's agreed.
Okay. Item four has been dealt with. Item five, mental health and wellbeing services and support. You have a report before you.
Okay, just looking to see if MD wishes to comment on this. Oh, Charlie's frozen. Charlie, you there?
No, 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 everybody else has frozen but me. I think that, I think we should have, the person should be outed and shamed for the interruption to council business. I just want to welcome the report. I think it's a really good report and it's something that Bailey Keenan asked for. There's a couple of good new initiatives and we're looking forward to the briefing tomorrow, which I think will expand upon these. There is a, it's not a comment, it's not a question but a comment, but it still requires maybe some answer from officers. And it's about the additional training that's going to be going into supporting mental health as we go through, as we emerge from this crisis and other forms of mental health begin to become more obvious in our young people. What support and training is going to be given to the frontline staff who are going to be responsible for helping our children? And it may just be a comment from Glen or from Paul.
Well, I'll pass to Paul Forst and see if he wants to answer or wishes to pass on.
Yeah, thank you, convener. Thanks for the question, councillor Malone. I actually have the manager who's responsible for putting the pool and the report together on the call, Jennifer King. I'd like to say a little bit about the training that's available for staff and what the plans are for ongoing continued support.
Okay, thank you for your question, councillor Malone. Some of the training has already started and is underway through a range of, it's primarily based around the emotional health and wellbeing toolkit. And that was launched prior to the pandemic and it will be refreshed when the strategy is launched again in November. But the training that will continue will be primarily located perhaps, so we've done a lot of work within nurture and further enhancing that through the trauma-informed approach. And that is an area that is currently underway with our educational psychology service. We have, through the counselling service providers and our T-Side counselling coordinator, we have offered training to all of the cluster schools in relation to, because in order to make a decision about whether or not a young person would benefit from counselling, then you need to have a good understanding of that young person's emotional health and wellbeing. So training has been provided and will continue through the course of the year with, from our counselling coordinator. So those are sort of two of the main areas, along with, as I say, association with the emotional health and wellbeing toolkit. An area that we're in discussion with our T-Side colleagues, where we've identified need for refreshment, improvement, would be in relation to suicide prevention and awareness. But that's with, sitting with the T-Side Suicide Prevention Strategy Group at the moment. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Yeah, no, and I want to just thank officers for all the work they've put into this document. Because as councillor Malone said, it's a really important document and I think especially so after the pandemic. As we know, this will have affected so many young people and their mental health as well. So it really is important document. And obviously I'm looking forward to the briefing tomorrow where also we can go into a bit more detail about exactly what it is we're doing and what we're trying to do to support these young people. But Mr Clancy, you wish to come in?
Yeah, I would just like to thank officers as well and I'd like to thank Bailey Keenan because he was the one that prompted the report coming forward and the briefing. So I'm hoping he finds it useful. It's certainly been useful for us to try and pull the information together. And I think as we look back on the report, although there's still a lot to do, there was a good distance that we've come down this road from where we were even five years ago. So we were really pleased at some of the steps, progress steps that have been made. But there's more to do. But I'm certainly hoping that the briefing that Jennifer holds will allow officers, elected members to ask more questions.
I'll let you back in very quickly, councillor Malone.
It's just to apologise to Jenny King. Obviously, when we got the briefing, it was Paul Clancy and Glen that gave us the briefing on this paper. And that's why I asked maybe perhaps if they would want to comment. But I know the work that Jenny and our team do and certainly reading the report. So I would like to agree with you, convener. I'd like to extend my congratulations to the team for bringing forward what is a very detailed and informative report. So sorry for leaving you out, Jenny.
No, apology accepted. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, can this report be agreed? Okay, thank you. Okay, Arlene.
Okay, that concludes the education items on the agenda and we'll now move on to item six. Care experienced children and young people. You have a report before you.
Okay, again, I'll just open up to MD has any questions or any comments. Okay, not seeing MD indicating. Councillor Malone.
Apologies for that. I'm not as fast as Bailey McPherson is in obviously getting my fingers working on the keyboard to illustrate I want to make a point. Again, it's welcome the report. And in particular, we know that there's been a reduction in the diversion from prosecution for young people. It's identified in the report. And all these reductions are welcome. Can you maybe give us an idea of the percentage of reductions in the report? Because it doesn't seem to be, and give us an explanation perhaps of why these reductions have occurred. Because the report's a bit silent on that and I think it's something that we would want to understand a wee bit more.
Pass it to Mr Clancy, but I do see other officers on the call if you want to pass it on, Paul.
Yeah, I'm happy for Mr Lloyd to lead on that one.
Okay, Glen.
Thank you, convener, and thank you councillor Malone. It's an increase. There's been an increase in the number of diversion from prosecution referrals from the Crown Office, procurator fiscal service. And we believe that that's a direct result of the increased collaborative working we've had with them in terms of clearly explaining what's available, what will happen to a young person if they're referred to the Community Justice Service for additional support. And equally, what will happen if they don't comply with that support? Because if they don't, then we refer them back in to the Crown Office. So the Crown Office could ultimately decide to prosecute if they so wish. In terms of the proportion of that, of the total number of young people dealt with by the Crown Office and the number of young people appearing in the sheriff court, it's very difficult to give a definitive answer because we don't collate all of the data on young people appearing in the sheriff court. But what we do collate data on is the number of court reports requested from the service by the sheriffs and the number of community payback orders. And both of those have gone down over the last two to three years. So we believe on the face of it, the diversion from prosecution referrals are replacing the number of young people appearing in the sheriff court, which is a good thing. That does though come with the caveat that all court business has gone down during the pandemic. Going forwards, we'll need to monitor that. But going forwards, we're confident that through the pandemic recovery plan, the justice recovery plan will maintain those trends with the fiscal service, both locally and in fact nationally. Because that's also reflected in the Community Justice Scotland Recovery Plan as well.
Okay, thank you for that, Glen.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. Again, I just want to put on record, thanks to all the officers for this report as well and all the work they've been doing over the last year or eighteen months. Because I think again, it's been a significant challenge for them and they've really put in an amazing amount of work to support our young people. So I want to put on record, thanks to officers. With that, I see no other comments. Can this be agreed? Okay, that's been approved and that's the business for children and families.
Thank you, convener. The next committee is the Community Safety and Public Protection Committee.
Thank you, Roger. Welcome to Community Safety and Public Protection. I'll hand over to Veronica to get us started.
Item one, are there any declarations of interest?
Councillor McGrady.
Yeah, just on the only item on the agenda, item two, I am the chair of TAP Plan that I've mentioned extensively in the report.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Okay, Veronica.
There is a deputation quest for item two on the agenda, low emissions zone. Do you agree to hear the deputation?
I think we do and I see a lot of nodding heads to concur. So if you want to introduce Veronica, thank you.
The deputation request is from Dr Munro Stewart. Are you present?
I'm present.
Good evening, Dr Stewart. As you may have seen from the previous committee, there was a deputation there. You'll have seven minutes to address the committee. I'll give you a small reminder maybe with six minutes into that. And if you remain there, there may be questions from elected members after your deputation. So if you wish to take it away, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening councillors and council workers. Thank you for finding the time to listen to a deputation from me. I'm Dr Munro Stewart. I'm a GP at Nethergate Medical Practice in T-Square in Dundee. And as well as my work as a GP, I work on health and environmental issues with NHS T-Side Sustainability Group, a group of over seventy healthcare workers locally known as Greener Practice, T-Side and Fife, and the Royal College of General Practitioners nationally. I'm motivated to do this because many of the health problems my patients have are reliant on issues that are related to climate pollution and things that are often in your hands. Thank you to the councillors who have found time to speak to me about health and environmental issues previously. And like in those conversations, my approach is one of looking to help you as councillors to make decisions that improve health and wellbeing in our city. I want to acknowledge the hard work that is ongoing to make improvements for Dundee. I know you don't get enough credit for your service, but as another public sector worker who understands some of the pressures, you have my appreciation and admiration. I've heard from you that public consent can be a barrier to changes that are in everyone's interest. One councillor told me that some constituents' loyalty is stronger to their car than to their firstborn child. But this is where I think that as a frontline health worker with the backing of a network of top local professionals, I can help you to make the bold changes that we need in the face of opposition. Hopefully it's easier for you to take action in the future on the basis of urgent and irrefutable medical evidence. You will have seen my open letter on the evidence for clean air, safe active travel and access to green and blue space. But since then, there's been further local research and an open letter to the First Minister. Dundee's own professor Joe Belch has just published local research about the impact of air pollution in Dundee and Perth. In addition to international evidence, we now have local evidence of the harms from air pollution and thereby the benefits of clean air. Air pollution is linked with cancer, asthma, diabetes, dementia and other diseases. We know that it affects the most vulnerable, the worst. The most disadvantaged are often the most exposed, being located next to busy roads. And also increased air pollution increases the pressure on our health services with admissions sometimes being over twice as likely when the levels of air pollution are high. I ask you to do all that you can to improve the air quality in Dundee so that we can stop the harm to our people that is going on now. The steps that you can take are outlined in my and Professor Belch's letter and I'm happy to discuss them further in the future. Although I think our role as healthcare professionals is to provide you with the evidence and it's for you to make decisions on how best to do that. There are tremendous opportunities for improving health and wellbeing and tackling pervasive problems like inequality, obesity and mental health issues, all through actions that we need to take anyway for climate mitigation, like access to safe, active travel, access to green and blue space and of course, clean air. There is a chance for Dundee to be a shining beacon of health, wellbeing and prosperity to cities around the world, to then impact broader change. And instead of being part of the problem, we can be part of the solution to climate and pollution and health issues. Thank you very much. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much for that deputation and your continuing interest in this subject and coming to talk to us tonight, Dr Stewart. So I will ask if there are any questions from elected members. And I'm not seeing any, no, there's Bailey McPherson has come in. So Bailey McPherson.
First of all, convener, I'm going to out myself and say that I think the person who caused the disruption a little bit earlier was my inability, councillor Malone, to actually, my answering machine was supposed to be on mute. Clearly it was not and neither were I. So I humbly apologise, humble pie all round. And Dr Stewart, I'm very grateful for your contribution and indeed your correspondence prior. And I think it would be very useful that we have continuing engagement. And I would just, my question is, would you welcome that? And I would really, I'm not particularly asking the officers to come back, but I would like to ensure that we have some form of mechanism whereby health professionals like yourself can engage with ourselves and with officers of the council on what is a vitally important issue for the city.
Yeah, I think as a group, Greener Practice, T-Side and Fife would be keen to be in communication. Part of the reason that I've done this separate to NHS T-Side is for me to write a letter and to get it checked and approved and whatever, it would have taken so long, it would have been pointless. So I know you have lines of communication with NHS T-Side and I'm in communication with the public health director as well and we're meeting again in a couple of weeks. But yes, I think hopefully we can be useful in ways that perhaps sometimes official NHS T-Side bodies might be less nimble.
Yeah, I'm very grateful for that. I think that having a streamlined method of engagement I think would be very, very helpful and I'm very grateful for your contribution tonight, Dr Stewart.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. Councillor Alexander.
Thanks, convener. But I think Bailey McPherson probably made the point I was going to make anyway. Again, just to thank Dr Stewart, who I've previously met as well for the proactive and way in which the organisation, or the host of professionals that you represent have constructively sought to engage and provide that feedback. Because I think what we need certainly is that critical friend to challenge, to encourage and also to educate. And I think it's really valuable to have medical professionals as part of the conversation. Because I think I might have said during our conversation, it's often perhaps not as well received if a politician is talking about the need to decarbonise and the necessity and other aspects around that issue. It's far more powerful if medical professionals are talking about the need and the, you know, necessity from a health perspective and the impact. So I would welcome, just as Bailey McPherson said, that ongoing engagement and dialogue going forward.
Thank you, and I'm happy to give the bad news about changes that we might need to make.
I might take you up on that offer. Bailey Keenan, you wish to come in?
Yeah, just to echo the comments that have been made, I believe that there is real merit in keeping that engagement going. You know, there is many areas within the city that we discuss as councillors that are not part of the low emissions zone and there is many climate issues that we need to address. So I welcome Dr Munro Stewart's contribution and his group's contribution towards that. And I think it's something that we've attempted a number of times to try to achieve. It's good that he's come forward with the backing of his group to do so. And you know, no doubt we'll hear from a health professional, it's always good to have that opinion that backs it up. You know, I think we do try to take it serious and the climate change is a real issue facing the city and we're concerned about areas such as Locky Road, that's pollution is there, Kingsway, Forfar Road, you know, so there is areas that we need to address throughout the city and a contribution like that is to be welcomed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments and I guess Locky Road, the thing that springs to my mind is rather than drawing the boundaries in, we should be pushing the boundaries further out when there's a problem of air pollution. That would be my reaction. We shouldn't be accepting it, we need to work out how we deal with that. And if that means pushing the boundaries further and further out, then so be it.
Thank you. I believe councillor Short wishes to come in.
Hi, yeah, thank you. Dr Stewart, it was just with you mentioning then about the boundaries. I've been working quite closely with my colleagues and colleagues at Scottish Parliament with regards to this and also across the portfolio that we have in the city of the bus companies and the involvement of the bus companies and the fact that just about every single bus that we have, whether it be a Stagecoach or an Explorer, goes through the city centre. So the impact of the movement in the direction of them upscaling, and if you look at their portfolio four years ago compared to the one that they have now and myself, Bailey McPherson, councillor McCready and councillor Flynn took a wee hurl on one of the electric buses that came up from London and Explorer actually have these arriving in time for Christmas and they're going to be diverted up the Locky Road. So and also I know that the number fifty-seven that used to go up to Blair Gowrie and Cooperangus, councillor Cordell has seen your brother on that one before. I know that that used to be like the Berry Bus and the Stagecoach have got a much better bus on that one now. So the boundaries, although they're physical in the low emissions zone, the actual opportunity that that boundary will have in a city like Dundee, because as you know, we go around in circles, it's going to have a massive impact on the city. And I'm just looking forward to it because I think it's forty-six percent of the city, including myself. And I know for a fact councillor McCarvin, councillor Malone, councillor Cordell, councillor Rochene Smith, councillor Rendall, we use the bus or bikes or walk around the city. So there's been a real kind of show of leadership from the councils across the city. And I know that it's not always an option for everyone, but when we can, we do lead by example and I hope you do too within your profession because you'll see what happens with regards to that, Dr Stewart.
Thank you. And I did see in the report on the agenda that there will be an impact wider because of the buses. I guess what we need to do is stick to World Health Organisation, air pollution limits and whatever that means we need to do and as soon as is practically possible.
Thank you. Bailey Wright, I've seen your hand go up and down again, were you looking to come in and having difficulties, sir?
Yeah, I was having difficulties. I just wanted to say to Dr Stewart that we appreciate him coming here. As a sufferer myself from lung disease, who didn't have the problem before I came to Dundee, I will never tire of hearing any news that you have in ways that you think that we can actually resolve the problem that's in the city. So thank you.
Thank you Bailey Wright. I see no more hands or questions, Dr Stewart. So thank you very much for your attendance and I hope you've felt from the room there that your appearance tonight was certainly worthwhile and there is that willingness to engage with the medical profession to help better inform the decisions we take here. So thank you again for your attendance.
Thank you.
And as we only have that one item, we will move straight on to it and I will just open the floor to any officers, questions for officers. Councillor McCready.
So I've got a couple of questions, probably slightly more of a comment, but I think that was a very interesting deputation that we had there. And I think, you know, the progress that we are making on the low emissions zone is very welcome, but we need to, it needs to make a difference on air quality in the city. And I think as I've said on, it was refreshing to hear from Dr Munro Stewart there and I think it's very important, as others have suggested, that we keep communication open. I think that would be really helpful. I certainly had communication with him before and spoken to him before. I think it's, I think it's really interesting and it's good to hear that medical professionals taking this seriously. I think at one point when I first raised some issues around Locky Road, I think I was certainly told that the comment came back that it was not as bad as some places in the developing world, which is not really good enough. So I think it's good to hear that we have got medical professionals who are interested. And I think it's important, I think it's the number of people we're getting at there in their earlier questions, that the low emissions zone is hugely important, but it cannot be the only action that we're taking with regard to air quality. Councillor Short is right that improving buses in the city centre probably will have a knock-on impact, but that can't be the only knock-on impact that we're looking for. So I think it's important that we do have a look at that. And I think it's also important, you know, to kind of get to where Dr Stewart was, that over the, you know, I think over the last eighteen months, we've seen that we can, you know, we can put together a concerted effort to tackle a public health crisis, which we've seen in Covid nineteen, but we've actually had a public health crisis ongoing caused by poor air quality in the city for longer than that. It impacts on the poor, it impacts on the sick, it impacts on the young and the old especially. And I think, you know, I think we're looking for a commitment that there will be a focus on action with regard to poor air quality across the city. So that would be one of my questions for officers. The other one, the other question I wanted to ask officers was, you know, I think, you know, as councillor Short said, we, you know, some of us relatively recently were on an electric bus along the Locky Road, which was very nice. We also see some retrofitting of buses being suggested and retrofitting being suggested as an option for buses. But we also see in the media yesterday, reports that retrofitted buses in Scotland, including according to the Sunday Times, in Dundee, have actually got poorer emissions figures than they had previously. So it's not actually making the improvement that it's meant to and actually making the situation worse because of the way that the retrofit is done. So I'd be interested in officers' views on that, whether they're aware of that discussion and whether that might impact on future work in the city. But you know, I think, I think all of us, certainly from that earlier discussion, I think all of us would hope that the low emissions zone works and makes a real difference to air quality in the city. But you know, we cannot, as I said, we cannot make that be, cannot let that be the only action that's just taken. I think I'm pleased to hear a number of colleagues in response to Dr Stewart, I think making clear that we, you know, that we are aware that there are issues of poor air quality out with the city centre. The low emissions zone is basically designed to deal with city centres, but we, you know, we need to make sure that we're doing things across, across the board and that we are, you know, I think that we had a bit of a challenge there that, you know, why aren't we aiming to be one of the best places for air quality in, you know, in Scotland, in Europe, in the world? You know, you know, we should have no limit to our ambition for our citizens, particularly when it comes to preserving their health. So I don't know if officers have got answers to any of the points I made, but you know, supportive of the, of the report tonight, convener?
Thank you for your comments there councillor McCready. And obviously I agree with you, this is one part, one tool in our kit to improve the air quality in the city. And we're looking at spaces for people that we introduced in the city centre, we're looking at the active travel scheme that's going on along our waterfront and all those things will help improve the air quality and improve the health of the city. But I'm going to let Tom in, I think, to address councillor McCready's questions there, if I may.
Just while we're waiting for Tom, councillor Cordell, I'm happy to answer a couple of those points. In terms of the work that we're doing for air quality throughout the city, you've mentioned a few of those. They are national drives rather than local, although they do very much correspond with our own plans, but it's three main areas for objective. One's the increase of zero emission infrastructure in vehicles. There's the active travel, which you've noted and again, we've got further development plans in conjunction with Transport Scotland as well for further strategic active travel freeways or active travel routes to tall quarters of the city. And in addition to the greener of bus infrastructure to electric, we're also looking at bus priority measures as well. And there's a, an options appraisal currently in progress, which will be getting completed over the next eighteen months to have a look at strategic priority corridors for funding of Transport Scotland's, or Scottish Government's, sorry, five hundred million pound investment in bus prioritisation measures. Just on the point about the poor air quality from retrofit of buses, I'm aware of that the initial indications which we've received are that it was to do with early life retrofitting and a proportion of the initial phase buses which were retrofitted. I believe Transport Scotland are looking at releasing a further report on the findings from that and will certainly share that with members when that becomes available.
Give you an apologies, I thought I'd take myself off mute earlier, but I hadn't, so thanks for doing for stepping in.
Thank you for that, yeah, thank you Ewan, on your go Tom.
So Ewan's covered the issue of the retrofit buses and poor results in some instances. On the wider point about ongoing work on air quality, yes, it doesn't stop with the low emissions zone, we're still going to be required to certainly monitor and report and also to develop and can keep under review our air quality action plan. So that work continues and there is, as I say, just one part of the low emissions zone, just one part of the wider strategy, both for local air quality and for, to improve climate related emissions.
Thanks, that's helpful. Thank you Tom, thank you councillor McCready. Bailey McPherson, you were next.
Yes, thanks convener. I'm grateful for the contributions from Mr McNorton and Mr Sterling there. And it's absolutely vitally important as we move forward that this is continually monitored and it's not set in stone in relation to the scope of the low emissions zone. So I'm hoping that we will have very regular reports back on the success and the issues around the LEZ once it's, once it's in place. My question's really around recommendation three in two, two one three. And it's about the fact that it notes that continued engagement with Scottish Government regarding future revenue costs is ongoing. Now, if we look at the actual likely revenue costs in three point two, they're not insignificant, the annual cost being well in excess of three hundred thousand pounds. And bluntly, I would hope that we will be properly refunded, shall we say, of these costs from Scottish Government, as Scottish Government has it as a key priority, that the cities across Scotland introduce low emissions zones. And I was just really wondering if officers can give me some reassurance in that regard in relation to the ongoing costs to ensure that we can continue the LEZ into the future.
I can try and make some comment on that, convener. I think the current position is, as was stated in the report, that discussions are ongoing. The full, it also says in the report, in terms of those revenue costs, in terms of the enforcement aspects, they won't kick in for another year or two, about twenty-three, twenty-four, but we'll need part of that funding as the system gets up and running and tested and then we'll need, you know, to look at those costs once enforcement begins. So there is some time to work on that and I think that's the process that we're going through at the moment.
Okay, I hear you, but the fundamental point, now I would hope that this committee will be kept updated on it, is that I would expect proper support from Scottish Government as Scottish Government has made it a key priority to ensure that air quality right across Scotland improves. So I would hope that officers will continue to update us in relation to what support this council and indeed others will get from Scottish Government in relation to maintaining our low emissions zones once they're in place.
I think Robert was looking to come in.
Thank you convener. And just to confirm, I think that we are pursuing that activity with the Scottish Government, we're engaging discussions with them and as the costs become more clearer, councillor, as the scheme is developed, that's an ongoing debate that we'll be having and pursuing. So just to, I suppose reassure members, that's very much work in progress.
Well, that's, that's good. Now, obviously I would hope that we will be kept updated with regard to that. So I'm grateful for that from Robert.
Thank you Bailey McPherson. Bailey Wright, you were looking to come in?
Yes, thank you convener. My question is on the financial implications at three point one. And it's talking about the estimated cost for the elements as against future shortfalls and revenue costs that would be required to be factored into future revenue budgets. I'm a bit concerned about that because I thought this was going to be fully funded. So who pays for the shortfall? I take it that we're having to pay for the shortfall and we'll have to budget for it as well. Am I correct? And I'm just wondering, why is it not fully funded?
Bring Robert back in on that, just to go over his previous answer again.
Thanks convener. So our expectation, I think, is that the scheme will be funded and that's the discussion that we're having. The other thing I suppose I would just assure members on is that we're looking at the costs and trying to bring them down as much as we can. But some of the difficulty with running the scheme is costs, for example, from DVLA and knowing exactly what the impact will be and whether there are a lot of infringements and a lot of use of the zone. And of course, the objective is that the zone isn't used and it reduces traffic and air pollution. So we'll continue to pursue that and we'll certainly keep members updated with how those discussions go. But we're assuming in our financial planning that those costs will be met and there would be a further saving to find.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that Robert. And I see no further questions, but I mean, I'm certainly hopeful that this will be a transformational development for the city and I'm looking forward to it progressing over the coming years. And I want to just thank officers, because a lot of work has gone into getting us this far, as you know, elected members will appreciate, we've had several reports coming to this committee and I'd like to thank officers for getting us to this point and also mention, you know, councillors Short, Flynn and Ross before them, who have worked hard and working with colleagues in the Scottish Government and working with officers to get us to this point. So I look forward to going forward and thank you. So is that agreed? Thank you, that's the committee.
Thank you convener. The next committee is the Neighbourhood Services Committee.
Thank you, good evening everyone. Veronica.
Item one, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations? Okay, thank you. Item two, review of rents and other housing charges. You have the report before you.
Thank you. This is a report we bring forward every year at this time to seek approval, to consult with tenants on the rent level required to fund the housing revenue budget. I know elected members were invited to briefings on I know elected members were invited to briefings on this some weeks ago. So I trust their questions were fully answered at this time and that we can agree to consult with our tenants over a two month period. I'm confident that we'll get another good result and keep up the level of over 20% of tenants participating, albeit without obviously a face to face event again. So, any questions?
Bailey Keenan wishes to comment, convener.
Yes, sorry, I was just bringing the chat up there just now.
Just to give an indication as well, I've got an amendment. I'm happy for that to be circulated. And if you're okay, I'll just speak to what that amendment is about. And hopefully we'll either reach agreement or we take it to a vote.
Okay. Veronica, you circulate the amendment first, please, whilst Bailey Keenan speaks to it.
Looking at the rent and obviously the proposals by officers for the level of rent, I haven't got overly much of an issue with that. But I do have concern that over the COVID period, the voids have continued to grow and provision needs to be made within the housing revenue account for that level of voids. And I would doubt very much whether the private sector has continued to leave their properties empty through the COVID situation, that we've seen voids grow from 200 to 400 nod. And the demand that it's meant that another, I think it's somewhere about 300,000 has been put onto the revenue needs of the budget to cope with that. So the motion is really calling upon officers to have a lean service review and look towards reducing that to pre-COVID position. You know, 600 and odd, 7,000 on a waiting list and 600 in order them homeless. And I don't think we can continue to accept that the voids continue to grow in the city at that level. If we've got to learn to live with COVID, then as a department, we need to learn to best live with that COVID and best make moves towards filling these voids at the earliest possible. You know, so that's the call upon officers to do that. The money that would be made available, that 300,000 could be spent on issues in relation to a climate change agenda, whether that be insulation or other things that would make a difference to people's homes. You know, I think that's the additional funds that people are looking to spend if they take a higher offer for the rent in that consultation. So the consultation can go ahead at the same levels. I'm just looking for the agreement that we look towards reducing these voids and an active programme towards reducing these voids.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. I'll ask if the director wants to come in or perhaps David Elaine, do you want to come in first?
Thank you, convener. First of all, I'd like to reassure Bailey Keenan that, you know, we already have a lean service review underway in relation to voids. Our pre-pandemic performance on voids has been very, very good. And it is a challenge coming through this pandemic to try and get back to those good performance levels. But the partnership that we have as construction services and through a lean service review, I'm confident over a period of time that we will get there, although I think it will take some time to reach that stage. I think in relation to the point about ring fencing, any savings for energy efficiency, that may be difficult if there are other pressures within the HRA. And that's the only comment that I would make, that we'd need to ensure that the housing revenue account did balance at the end of the financial year. So that's the only caveat that as an officer I would like to make to that point. In relation to the monitoring, I think that every three months could be quite a challenge for officers. But what we're happy to do is to ensure that we report back at the appropriate time to committee when we have an outcome of that lean service review, so that we can outline the recommendations going forward.
Bailey Keenan?
I mean, I still, we'd probably prefer to make the thing formal. I hear what officers are saying. I think it'll perhaps push the thing in the direction of a much quicker response, a bit more of the thought process coming forward to elected members in a report. And therefore I would hope to achieve that. I mean, I get the, you know, it'd be difficult to spend the extra money if someone else goes awry with the budgeted position. I accept that that may well be the case. But I mean, we're looking for others to put additional, we're looking for the rent payer to put additional funding so that we can enhance the service that's offered other than the basic. You know, and I thought, I would hope that every effort would be made in filling these voids. We've got 450 voids. We used to sit with 220. You know, it's doubled, you know, so effectively there is quite a bit extra money there as opposed to what's built in the 300,000. So, you know, I think, you know, I'd like to see things moving reasonably quickly to reduce that voids back down. It's frankly no good enough that we sit with that levels. Understand that officers are under a bit of pressure, but it's really trying to get something that'll make that happen. We'll kind of just live with things as they are.
Elaine, do you want to come back in?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Maybe if I can ask Mr Simpson just to come in and outline just some of the work that we've already started on the lean service review, just to reassure Bailey Keenan that this has been actively worked upon, it is a priority for the service and that we're doing everything we possibly can to get back to those good performances that we had pre-pandemic. Mr Simpson, do you want to come in on that?
Yes, thanks, Elaine. Yeah, I can reassure committee that we have already started a review. We've brought together ourselves, our voids team, our lettings team, crucially, our contractor, construction services, who carry out the work for us. And we're looking at what resources we have, why those resources are at the level they're at. We're looking at, can we prioritise some of the voids and get them moving quicker? And we look at applying more resource to the issue. So all the things you would expect in a lean service review, you're looking at the whole process end to end. There's some component parts within the process from when a house is vacated to when it is re-let. And a lot of that is around construction services. But it also involves environment department in terms of clearing out empty houses. And it also involves the lettings team in terms of identifying the next eligible applicant. So there is very much a process that we have. But I accept everything that Bailey Keenan said about the need to push on and make sure that this review comes out with some solutions. I would suggest, though, as Elaine mentioned, that this might take a little bit of time. We will give it the priority. We've already started, as I've just said, and as Elaine's confirmed. But it will take some time to get it moving and get the resources applied to get the work done. The work is quite significant in some of the properties. And I had this discussion with Bailey Keenan last week around the standard that we work to, the agreed re-let standard that we work to, that was agreed with tenants and at the best value review group. So absolutely hear what committee says tonight about the need to reduce this and to reassure you all that we're on it, we're working on it and we'll work quite hard on it.
Convener, if I could come back in again. I mean.
Sorry, yes, on your go, Bailey Keenan.
I hear what officers are saying. I just look to formalise the position. I think we need to reduce the number of voids that we've got. And I hear that there's a lean service review on and I know that it needs to take into account Dundee contract services. But recently, we subcontracted work that would normally go to Dundee contract services because we didn't have the individuals there homegrown to do that job. And if that's the answer that comes with the lean service review, I'd like to hear it. But I think we need that level of feedback directly to us because the rent payer at the moment is having to put up with these number of voids. It means the lack of income coming towards council. And, you know, whilst I'm saying we can live with it for a period of time because I haven't asked you to reduce the rent consultation by £300,000. You know, so I'm allowing that level of slack for officers. But I'm really looking for, you know, a decent response. Know the ad hoc bit that we're getting, we're working on it. Something tangible that we can read and see that these are looking to be reduced. There is £300,000 worth of potential income that could be there tomorrow if we could fill these number of houses. So, you know, I think that we need to hear where the pitfalls are in the service. And if that's about labour or being able to fill it with trades or whatever, then I'd like to hear it.
Elaine, do you want to come back in?
Thank you, convener. Again, I'd like to reassure Bailey Keenan that this is a priority. I would point out, however, we are recovering from a pandemic and across all areas of work in housing and construction services, trying to restart capital programmes, trying to restart our full re-let service and also our full repairs and maintenance service in a situation where there are issues around labour and material shortages and increasing prices. So there is a lot of challenges out there. And I just wanted to put in context, convener, the circumstances around this piece of work that we're also dealing with across the board. But this is very much a priority for the team to be working on this because it is important that we get these houses let as quickly as possible. But there is a context to this around which officers are working. And it's quite a challenge.
Yeah, I agree with Elaine on this. And Bailey Keenan, I'm just wondering if, you know, this is about consultation. So I'm happy to agree the amendment on the basis that Elaine has just spoken about. We're already doing what you're suggesting in paragraphs two and three. So if you're happy to remove that, because we're doing it anyway, you know, she's just reassured you that that is happening. So I feel like, you know, we could accept it if you take those two paragraphs out.
So there will still be, you'll take the paragraphs out and you leave, the money will be set aside. Is it? Because I'm trying to read this again on my phone because the rest of the technology's went, so.
So you're saying, I move as an amendment that in addition to agreeing the recommendations in the report, the committee should also agree to, I'm suggesting you take the next two paragraphs out. And we say, agree that all savings generated by the review will be ring fenced for spending on energy saving and climate change measures for the benefit of council tenants. That's what you would want your amendment to say.
Okay, I'll agree to that.
Okay, all right. I have some other people wanting to come in. Bailey Wright, was that you on this item or was that previous? That was previous. Sorry, I'm just looking at the column here. So councillor Richardson, I think, next.
Thanks, convener. I'm happy that you're going to accept that any savings would go towards further energy savings and other measures to improve the housing stock. I am a wee bit disappointed in terms of the level of voids that we have, given that last year we had a conversation around the need to improve and the need to increase the houses that we had. And to find out that, yes, we set aside £6 million to build or buy in new stock. But we've actually managed over the pandemic to increase the number of voids by more than double, given where we are in terms of the waiting lists and the amount of people that are homeless and desperate for housing. I mean, the whole committee agreed last year that housing was the most important thing during this pandemic, that we need to do everything we could to help support the people in Dundee to have a home where they could shelter and, you know, or go into lockdown or shelter from this horrible pandemic and the consequences of it. So it is quite disturbing to see the fact that in that period, you know, work has not really continued, work has fallen aside by the wayside and we've managed to get ourselves in a position where our voids are now double what they were. So I would like to see progress being made with due urgency in terms of getting these houses back into being rented because people out there need them.
Well, thank you for the comments, but I believe councillor Richardson, that that's exactly what the director has said will happen. We're working as hard as possible, but you know that the difficulties with all sorts of things that have happened because of the pandemic, due to the pandemic are still continuing to happen. So we can only work as fast as we possibly can on getting these things resolved. So, you know, I feel like Elaine has really answered that question. So, but thank you for the comment. Councillor Alexander, please.
Thanks very much, convener. That's appreciated. And I think there's much merit in what others have said tonight. I think there are a couple of points I would like to make. So first of all, I think it's important to say that information related to voids is already reported and goes through the Housing Best Value Review Group, on which there is a member of the Labour Group and other opposition members represented. So there is regular reporting and information collated by the department that's already in circulation. So it might be worthwhile if Bailey Keenan speaks to the representative to ensure that that information is cascaded. Because I think there is a good amount of work that's already undertaken by officers to monitor that situation and to explain the position that they're in. And I remember Elaine, going back a few years, when I was convener of the department, how important that issue was, particularly for the tenants and the DFT who were represented on the Housing Best Value Review Group. And they were very keen, as well as officers, to ensure that the voids were, you know, reduced as much as they possibly can. There is an issue, and again, I'm just seeking some clarification because I think I've got muddled up with how many paragraphs there was in Bailey Keenan's amendment. I think there is a real issue in ring fencing funding. So what we're talking about here, and I don't, as I've said, I don't have any problem with the merit of what's being suggested. But if what we are saying is, or during this meeting dictating how that money might well be spent, if there are savings, then I have a real issue with that. Because let's hypothetically say that there is a rising issue with homelessness that has an additional requirement for us to address. We're now saying that any additional funding or saving that's been created as a result of this cannot be used for another purpose other than two which is set out within the amendment. And I'm sorry, but I think that's blatantly stupid. I don't think we should be saying at this meeting that we should have only two areas in which we can provide that money. I think what we've seen over the last 18 months is that we need to be flexible and react to situations as they arise. So I have some real concern around that because I don't think we should be hamstringing officers during the course of this meeting for a situation or a scenario that we haven't yet dealt with or we don't know what will be in six, 12, 18 months' time. So I think, hopefully, Bailey Keenan understands where I'm coming from when I'm saying that. Because it isn't that I do not agree with the substance of what he's suggesting, but I do not think it is the purpose of this meeting to dictate how savings should be spent when there are some emerging issues and will continue to be emerging issues as we move down the line. So I think that is an important point to make and something that I think we should all consider. I think the final thing to say is, we were obviously, this report is discussing the rent. So, you know, you've been very generous, I think, councillor Rendall in taking this and agreeing to the main first paragraph that councillor Keenan, Bailey Keenan, has set out. And of course, officers have given an assurance that that work's already been undertaken. So essentially, we're having a fairly lengthy discussion about work that has already been undertaken by officers, work which has already provided, information that has already provided to councillors through perhaps another forum. And the main point of disagreement I would have is dictating how that money is spent. So with all of that said, I'm happy to finish up there, convener. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll better bring Bailey Keenan back in again.
Councillor Ross is looking to come in before it. But I suppose the question is, if that changes the position of yourself on what the leader of the councils you've said, then I would like it to go to the vote. I think that I've obviously tried to bring something forward that doesn't upset the apple cart in any way. But it's about if there is money that becomes available to the council that is spent in some direction, it's money you don't have as yet. But when we're hearing that we should ring fence, that other things might crop up, that these other things ought to be some level of provision made for them within the budget. And councillor Richardson just highlighted that we made £6 million available and there's no brick being laid. So, you know, what's the position? Is it what we agreed, convener? Or is it what the leader of the council is just expecting you to go along with?
No, it's not what he's expecting me to go along with. I mean, I see. No, it's not what he's expecting me to go along with. I mean, as he said, you know, this is about the rent consultation. What you're bringing in is separate for that. But I appreciate what you're saying. But I'm not convinced that we need to add that at this time.
I could have looked to take the £300,000 that's available within that, pushed officers towards it. And it either got a motion, so it would have been a slightly different motion, but it would have reduced the rents. This way, I didn't reduce the rents. I looked for money to be spent improving the quality and improving the environmental issues around housing.
Would you have a second there if we go to the vote?
Convener, sorry.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, apologies, Alan. You'll need to, yeah, you've had your hand up for a while. Sorry, I'll bring it in now.
Yeah, no, so I hope you didn't mind me interjecting there. It's just if we go to the formal position then, obviously that moment has passed. A lot has been said since I put my hand up. And when I originally put my hand up, it was just to seek clarification around what Bailey Keenan was intending with his amendment. But since then, I feel quite, well, very reassured actually by the answers given by Elaine and David. And I think when it comes to thinking about the rise in the voids, obviously that's unfortunate. And nobody would want that to happen in an ideal world. But we do have to recognise that the last almost two years of everyone's life has been completely, you know, unprecedented. And all areas of life have been negatively impacted. So, you know, I think we have to have faith in our officers and that a lean service review is already underway, so we don't need another one. And that we wait to see what comes out of that. And also, I agree with councillor Alexander, having many moons ago now, but having sat on the Housing Best Value Review Group. It is a very good working committee. And I think it's a very worthwhile committee. And as councillor Alexander said, it has representatives from all groups on it. And I think that is the correct way to deal with this. I'll make a comment as well whilst I'm on. I think the report's actually very good. And with the exception of the very negative headline that was given to the report that was in the tully last week, I think the actual substantive report in the tully was very good. And I think we do very well. I'd like to thank officers for the way we conduct these consultations with our tenants. And I really hope that there is a high uptake again in the consultation. And that's really all I was going to say, convener. Thanks.
Thanks very much for those comments, councillor Ross. I think Mr Thompson wants to come in.
Thank you, convener. I just, sorry, my hand's been up for some time. And I just wanted to offer some clarification with regard to the figures in the report because there's been a few comments made in terms of the overall level of increase and what that equates to in terms of percentage terms. So just to be clear, in terms of last financial year for the budget, the overall voids budget was £978,000. And the proposal is to increase that to just under 1.2 million. So it's actually an increase of £212,000 rather than 300,000. And if we express that as in percentage terms, in terms of how it sits as part of the overall charge, in 2122, it was 1.9%. And it's now increased to 2.3%. So it hasn't doubled. It's just the fact that the number of properties at any point in time have increased. But in overall terms, the overall amount set aside is only 1.4%. So I just wanted to set that clarification in context in terms of the figures that were included in the report.
Thanks very much for that, Mr Thompson. Bailey McPherson, you want to come in?
Thanks, convener. With regard to the discussion regarding ring fencing, the funding, I have real concerns about that. In a way, I'm a bit of an echo of councillor Alexander on this particular one because I think we all accept the very challenging position that the department has had in relation to voids during the pandemic. I think any reasonable person would agree with that. And I think it was Mr Simpson who touched on the fact that maybe Mrs Fairlane about this will take a bit of time. It will take a bit of time. I think we all accept that. And us sitting here on the 25th of October 2021, over something that is going to take time, but I'm sure we're all confident the lean service review will, over time, ensure that we improve our voids position back to pre-pandemic levels. But why should we, in October 2021, be sort of shoehorning ourselves into what we spend any savings on? I just don't think that's sensible. If these were realisable savings today or tomorrow, then yes, we could say, well, in terms of our priorities, just null. Because I'm not suggesting for the moment that energy efficiency savings, energy efficiency measures are anything other than a good thing to do. I have real concerns about shoehorning ourselves into a position that frankly is going, you know, the savings are not going to appear overnight. And I really don't think it's particularly helpful to do so, albeit well meant. So I would really rather that that wasn't taken forward, to be perfectly honest. Not, as I say, I think that energy savings and climate change measures aren't a good thing in themselves. But I think there are good reasons for not shoehorning ourselves into a particular position as of tonight.
Thanks very much for those comments, Bailey McPherson. I'll come back to you, Bailey Keenan. If you still want to go forward with the amendment based on everything that's been said, would you have a second there?
Yes, I'll second them.
Okay, thank you. Just go to the vote then.
Convener?
Yes.
Can I please clarify that the motion in your name is approval of the recommendations in the report and who your second is?
Oh, yeah, apologies. Do I have a second there?
I'll follow the second, Jan. Christina, Christina, I'll do it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mr Many.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The motion by the convener and seconded by Bailey Roberts is that the report be approved. The amendment by Bailey Keenan and seconded by councillor Richardson has been circulated. Convener?
Motion.
Councillor Alexander?
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell?
Motion.
Councillor Cordell?
Motion.
Councillor Dawson?
The motion.
Councillor Flynn?
Motion.
Councillor Hunter?
Motion.
Bailey Roberts?
Motion.
Councillor Rome?
Motion.
Bailey Sawyers?
Motion.
Councillor Short?
Motion.
Councillor Smith?
Motion.
Bailey Keenan?
Amendment.
Councillor McCready?
Amendment.
Councillor McIrvin?
Amendment.
Councillor Malone?
The amendment.
Councillor Mara?
The amendment.
Councillor Richardson?
The amendment.
Bailey Wright?
Amendment.
Bailey Scott?
Amendment.
Councillor Hay?
Amendment.
Councillor Scott?
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson?
The motion.
Councillor Duncan?
Motion.
Lord Provost Borthwick? Lord Provost? I'll mark that as a no vote. Councillor Murray?
Motion.
Councillor Ross?
Motion.
That's 16 for the motion.
Veronica, apologies, Veronica, the Lord Provost is trying to speak into his microphone and I believe it's come off mute, so.
Okay, thank you, councillor Alexander. Lord Provost?
Motion.
Thank you, Lord Provost, and my apologies. So that's 17 for the motion. And it's 10 for the amendment. So the motion is carried.
Thank you. Veronica, next item.
The next item is Scottish Government Nature Restoration Fund, 21, 2021 to 2022. You have the report before you.
Happy to report that we've received funding of £109,000 from the Scottish Government's Nature Restoration Fund, which allows us to go forward with our biodiversity aims in line with the climate change commitments that we made recently. So you'll see from the appendix that we plan to do things in different parts of the city. So I hope everyone agrees that this is something that we are all looking forward to and hope that will go forward. I have councillor Cordell, please.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to welcome the report and some really nice initiatives there, particularly the work. Obviously, I would raise it in Dawson Park. But I would particularly want to mention the boards that we're going to be seeing at these biodiversity areas because I think there was maybe some confusion about what constituted biodiversity areas, what the intent was and what they were going to be looking like when they were all up and running. So I think the more information that is available to the public, the better on these projects. So I would welcome that. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Apologies, Bailey McPherson. I think you were first there, but it's the same timeline, 1859, so on you go.
We'll forgive you. It's hardly a problem. Thanks, convener. I just really wanted to thank Mr Boyle. The proposals in relation to Maglan Green are welcome. But the graphic that had been issued rather implied a spring meadow along the top of the green, along the, if you like, the northern edge of the green, where the longstanding and rather iconic daffodil displays appear each year. And it rather implied that they replace them. I've had confirmation from Mr Boyle that they will, in fact, the spring meadow will actually include the daffodils along with other planting, which is very welcome. I think that's a very useful and helpful way forward. And I'm grateful to Mr Boyle for providing some reassurance because I had a number of constituent queries after the graphic went out.
Okay, thanks very much for those comments. Not seeing any other hands or comments. So can this report be agreed? Thank you.
Item three, contract for the treatment of paper and card. This is for approval.
So if we agree to approve this contract for the treatment of paper and card, we anticipate an income of £200,000 in the two years that it will run with an option to extend. And it's thanks to the changes at March Banks that we agreed previously that we're able to produce paper and card of a very high quality, which allows us to then get this income for it. So any comments or questions on this one? No, not seeing any. Can this report be agreed? Thank you. And that, I think, is the business.
Thank you, convener. The next committee is the City Development Committee.
Good evening all. Who have I got from committee services tonight?
It's Arlene.
Aye, Arlene, thank you very much. Let's start, Arlene, please.
Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Any declarations for members? I don't see any, Arlene. If we can move on, please.
Thank you. We've received a deputation request in relation to item three, supported on registered minibus services review. Do you agree to hear it?
Would the committee agree to hear this? I say on our heads, yes, you'll go ahead with that, please.
Okay, it's Dorothy McHugh on behalf of Dundee Pensioners Forum.
Good evening, Dorothy. Sorry, thanks for your patience. It's been quite a long night so far. I don't know if you're there, are you?
Yes, I'm here.
Yep. You have seven minutes. And if you can just hold off after that, in case any questions from members, please.
Okay, thank you. Can I just say, I've enjoyed, I've enjoyed what I've heard so far. Very interesting. Okay, leather buses were first introduced in 2018 with the aim of providing additional transport options to the community and to maximise utilisation of the council's minibus fleet and drivers. Now we hear that reviews undertaken by the fleet manager have identified alternative activities that could be undertaken to maximise use of the council's minibus and driver resource. So my first question is, what happened to the need to provide additional transport options to the community? As part of this review, it appears the decision has been made to remove a hired minibus from the school transport fleet. And the report goes on, this reduction in core resourcing will remove the capacity to deliver one of the leather buses. That's at 7.3 in your report. So that's one leather bus transferred to the school transport fleet to replace a hired minibus. What is it? These minibuses are already part of the school transport resource. The other two, it says, will be released for other activities as yet unspecified. The report makes much of the variance between what is termed value for money, performance of the five minibus services, and outlines in some detail the range of passenger subsidies from £1.94 to £15.91 per passenger journey. That's at 7.4 to 7.6 in your report. The value for money argument is based, then, it would seem, on the amount of passenger subsidy. But consider this, if we had, say, 180 passengers per week on the Balgave leather bus, that would reduce the subsidy per passenger to £1.94, the same level as the shopper's bus that is being retained, but would not change the overall cost of providing the service. Or is value for money about numbers? The City Development convener has reported in the press as saying it is unfair to continue paying so much money for so few people. The so much money he talks about is £54,000. So let me turn to the concept of value. The report before you insists this proposed cut in service to older people is about securing value. What is value in relation to services for older people? The pensioners forum gets calls every week from older people across the city experiencing difficulty getting to and from their homes, to shops, GP surgeries and hospital appointments, following last November's redesign of services by Explore, now McGill. Older people who live outside of the main bus routes are having to walk further, take two buses or spend money they can't spare on taxis. These minibus services provided a lifeline for many older people. Older people who have suffered disproportionately throughout this pandemic and who are, as in so many other spheres, voiceless. A lifeline is value. A leather on the bus is value. A simple journey from A to B is value. Not having to waste money on a taxi is value. Knowing that your city council is aware of your needs and is responding to them is value. Let's invest in value. The integrated assessment that accompanies this report recognises these proposals will have negative impacts on older people. I'll say that again, negative impacts on older people. Does that not matter? Are you really gathered here tonight to impose negative impacts on older people? Is that what you'll vote for? All of the money spent and being spent at the waterfront is seen not as a cost, but as an investment. Recently, the council spent in excess of 1.2 million for a T-whale sculpture, an investment. I urge you to consider this comparatively small spend of £54,000 as an investment in the health and the wellbeing of one of the most vulnerable groups in our community. Please vote to value our older people. Please vote to champion our older people. Spread some kindness and send a message to older people across our city that this council hears their voice and is investing in their needs.
So it's me, Dorothy, sorry. Yep. Okay, I have a few questions. If you can stay close. Bailey Wright, you're first, please.
Okay, thank you, convener. Dorothy, I know that you're committed to support and help older people in Dundee with their isolation and loneliness, especially people who find it very difficult to get out of their homes. And I've heard you say, and I've heard others say, that it was a lifeline for them to get out and about. And obviously, a big bonus to be able to chat to people on the bus, whether it be the driver or other people who are on the bus. And I think it's probably quite an important thing because that may be the only person that they are able to.
because that may be the only person that they are able to speak to in the space of a day. And my question is, do you think we should be making it easier for people to use the bus? And in doing so, fully leading to all the seats being filled? And I don't know, do you have any ideas? And what value would you put on resolving the problem of loneliness and isolation throughout Dundee? Because it's not just in certain areas, it's across the whole of Dundee. Thank you.
Well, can I just say, the effects of social isolation and loneliness on older people are now widely understood after the time that we've been through this pandemic. And of course, I think the city, the council should be resourcing buses for older people to get them out and about. And an awful lot of older people now have a fear of venturing out. And that leads further to social isolation. And social isolation, to be blunt, it kills older people. So it behoves us to work towards encouraging older people to get out in a bus. These services, far from being cancelled, should be promoted. I mean, it might be that the Balgate leather bus particularly was said to have a low usage. But did we look properly at the route? Did we speak to people to see where it was they wanted to go? Where did they want to get the bus? Where did they want to go on the bus? Socialised, I can't stress this strongly enough. Social isolation is a huge and mounting problem. And listen to a report in an earlier committee about mental health. Well, I'll tell you, there is a mountain of mental health issues waiting to be identified among older people in our city. We need to do something about it, not cut services that get them out of the house.
Okay, thanks, Dorothy.
We have Billy McPherson next, please.
Thanks, Convenor, and well said, Dorothy. Fewer reports have made my blood boil more than this one. And you touched on something that I actually raised with officers when they set up the so-called Balgate leather bus. And that was about consulting with the service users on the route, because it's all aboard the Miller's Wind car park. Whoever thought of that? And had it continued into the city centre, it would become a far more usable resource. And I make no bones, Dorothy, that I will be moving an amendment tonight. And part of that is not about simply retaining the three leather buses, but consulting with the service users on the routes. And with that in mind, Dorothy, can I ask you a question? Was there any engagement by the city council with the Pensioners Forum? Or, to your knowledge, with service users of the leather bus in relation to the proposals that are coming forward to us tonight?
Certainly not with the Pensioners Forum, and I'm not aware of any engagement with any other, more widely.
Okay, thanks for that, Dorothy. I've spoken to a number of the service users and no one's spoken to them. But I'm grateful for your reply, Dorothy.
Councillor Mulvaney, next, please.
Yeah. Again, thank you, Dorothy, for the deputation. I appreciate particularly your discussion on value rather than cost. And very often, we seem to understand the cost of things, but not the value and the other contributions that are made from that. For example, NHS Scotland said, for every pound we spend, we invest in trying to prevent loneliness. There is a £3 benefit to the National Health Service. The London School of Economics puts the price of loneliness and isolation at £6,000 per person. So I was just wondering, in the context of that and the discussion about value you had, whether you would agree with the Scottish Government's tackling isolation analysis consultation paper that pointed the importance of accessible transport as being significant in reducing isolation and loneliness? I wonder if you would agree with those comments from the Scottish Government?
Absolutely. Transport is, it's like housing. Transport is absolutely vital. And particularly in these times, when you're talking about older people, it's to defray that the implications of social isolation is absolutely vital. It needs to be accessible. We spoke with the bus companies when they redesigned their services in November, I think it was November 2020. And the results of that redesign has meant that an awful lot of older people don't have easy access to a bus. And they're choosing to stay at home rather than go and get their messages. You know, getting somebody else to go and get their messages. This is not good news. We need good, accessible buses.
Thank you. Councillor Ross, please.
Thank you, Convenor. Thanks for your...
Councillor Ross, sorry, can I hold off a second? I forgot to ask Councillor Mulvaney if he wanted to come back. Apologies.
Yeah, yeah. Just another question for Dorothy, as you mentioned. And this is based on questions that I've had from constituents about elderly people having to rely on taxis, for example, to actually go and do things like shopping and other social activities. And adds significantly to the bills they face each week. I was speaking to one such couple just yesterday, and they were saying they're £12 per day in taxis in order to make contact with the relevant services. Not just shopping, but for things like going to libraries, going visiting health centres, et cetera. So I just wonder how common it is you're hearing from people within the Pensioners Forum and beyond that there is this additional burden being heaped on people in terms of the cost of mobility?
Absolutely agree. There's a hard winter coming and fuel prices are going to rise. Everything, it seems, is going up. This is not going to be an easy winter. And, you know, I have this vision of a bright shiny waterfront and a dark hinterland where all the auld men and the auld wifys are cowering in their house, frightened to put their heating on. Now, that's maybe an exaggeration, but you know what? This is what we hear from older people, from pensioners. They're not looking forward to this winter. And to take away that little lifeline of a bus where they could go and get their messages or go to the doctor's surgery, I'm sorry, it's mean spirited, that's what it is.
Councillor Ross, apologies for that, you can come in now.
Yeah, no worries, Convenor. Thanks, and thank you, Dorothy, for your deputation. I'm just wondering, I'm looking at the recommendations here in the report, and recommendation B asks us to note that the out and about on shoppers' bus services will be retained and will be fully reproduced when a sustained period of reduced COVID-19 transmission is achieved nationally. I don't know what that means in terms of the leather bus. I don't know, does that in some way, is there any mitigation in that recommendation for the leather bus?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, well, that's maybe a question that I would need to ask the officer. And I'm just...
You'd like to ask the officer, Alan?
Okay, well, one other question. Is it correct that the leather bus isn't running at the moment due to COVID, is that correct?
That's right, it's not running at the moment.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
None of the services are running at the moment, Alan, due to COVID and the decision. Obviously, because the buses are used for the children in the morning and vulnerable groups, et cetera. So thank you very much, Dorothy. Appreciate your time and your input. And we will go to officers' questions, and I have first Billy Keenan.
Yeah, I'm just recalling, I'm assuming that in relation to COVID is about, the use of the bus in relation to COVID is about perhaps it being a minibus and social distance being an issue? Or perhaps, as you say, Convenor, it's about the other uses that the bus halves, has, if that's young people that aren't vaccinated and mixing it. So sustained levels of, I'm reasonably happy with. But the question for officers is, I believe that this report came around in relation to the bus service that they took away from Balgate. And at that time, there was an agreement that they would look, as Billy McPherson suggested, towards talking with passengers and stakeholders about what type of thing that that service would need. Well, I had a deputation that pleaded passionately to keep the bus service at the hut then. And here we are, you know, it was all about the arguments of this was the best thing we can offer in relation to demand responsive transport, something that the council has been milling about for, you know, forever and a day without a real commitment in any kind of way towards it. And this was the first step towards that. I mean, it's a retrospective step for, to be dragging that away. So, you know, is the money going back to demand responsive transport? Is it just a saving taken by council? What's the administration's view on it as well? And I would like to hear from the officers if my train of thought is correct in relation to where it all stemmed from, and that being demand responsive transport?
I think Mr Norton, are you on the call on the meeting tonight?
Yes, thanks, Chair, and thanks for the question by Keenan. In answer to your first point about the sea station services due to COVID is to do with the mixed user groups predominantly. Again, it's twice a day with school-aged children in and two groups of vulnerable passengers at the same time. At the beginning, we actually had four of our drivers off with COVID. So it has been an area of risk, particularly a more sort of comparison to registered services. In terms of demand responsive transport, we did note in the report that was considered on a small scale, particularly in urban environment with three routes, it's not a particularly efficient way of managing things. And again, there's additional costs involved in the controller aspect of moving the bookings and the services about. It's something that works better on a rural and a larger scale. In terms of the value from the three services, if this were approved today, that would be reinvested against some of the cost pressures that we have elsewhere in the service at the moment in the face of rising challenges.
Thank you for that, Ewan. I don't know if you're able to answer this, or John's on the phone, sorry, I've just come on this one. With regards to the routes that were mentioned and the fact that he uses bus routes possibly, can you maybe explain the clarity on that one?
Yeah, it has been designed in mind of previous representations that the services had in about routes and priorities. But the main caveat is that it's constrained by crossing the registered service routes and the competition laws around that.
Thank you for that. I have a supplement. Convenor, I have a supplemental. Just really to clarify then, that when the report was agreed that we'd move the bus in Balgate or agreed that we'd draw that service, there was an agreement that we'd talk to stakeholders. Did any of that ever happen? And in relation to subsidy, could anybody give me above-part figure as to what would subsidise the price of a flight from Dundee to London would be?
I think we'll just focus on the buses, if that's okay, the leather buses, what you're focusing on. Thank you, Mr Norton.
Yes, I'm aware that there was engagement and consultation, but it was, it took on board the views which were made by user groups in advance. I'm not aware of there being a specific consultation in relation to the design of the routes. And again, I would repeat that they were constrained by a number of limitations.
Thank you for that. Billy McPherson, please.
Yeah, first of all, just before I ask my questions of officers, I should just say, I had a written commitment on the 26th of May that the service was coming back and that they were targeting a date during the school summer holidays. I then queried on the 20th of July why it hadn't started. I sent a reminder on the 12th of August, because I got no reply to that one. I got an email on the 16th of August telling me that it was unsurprisingly because of COVID levels. But they're having to consider driver availability, blah, blah, blah. Nothing, nothing to suggest that the service was being taken away. I emailed the department back on the 22nd of August and pointed out that Aberdeen City Council had brought back their, the Aberdeen Community Transport Team had brought back their community transport and asked them to engage with Aberdeen and feedback to me. No reply. I then, more recently, sent a grumpy email saying why it had no response. And then I got a one-liner reply from the director the day before the committee papers came through the letterbox telling me a report was coming to the City Development Committee. I am furious. And I would like officers to explain the lack of proper engagement. They knew my interest in this, because I speak to elderly people in my ward who are desperate for the service to come back. And all along, I feel I have been strung along. I feel very, very upset about that. I don't think we've had in any shape or form the sort of relationship that I normally have. I've got no major problem with the department as a whole. They're very good at replying to many things, but on this, it's been total abject failure. And I'm furious about it, furious. Because I have, in good faith, told constituents that the service would be coming back, because that's what they told me. And I would like officers to explain why this has been done in such an underhand manner, because that is what has happened. So perhaps we can have an explanation, please.
I think that should be acceptable, and your tone's a bit rough, I have to say. I have to probably say that maybe you've calmed down slightly. Can I, Mr Norton, please? Sorry, sorry, Billy McPherson. Mr Norton, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you for the comments, Billy McPherson. Just in regard to the first point about the tensions over the summer period, it's been part of our ongoing learning about the COVID transmission rates and viruses. And again, it has been a learning curve for us, particularly from a transport point of view. At the time, we were planning to reintroduce the services. And that was done at a time when COVID transmission rates were very low. The vaccination programme was giving us a lot of confidence in that regard. And we did believe, and it was looking from a national perspective, like we were exiting the pandemic. It then reemerged, typically with COVID transmission rates in all the peaks. It comes up very, very fast. And we postponed those plans for, we have no, today is the decision on what happens the longer term with these services. So no decision has been made on that, and that's what the report for today is here for. But again, my apologies about the communications that we've had on this matter so far today.
I would just say, I would just say the communication on this has been terrible, because I have been told constituents in good faith, exactly word for word, what officers have said. And at no time have I been given any indication that this service was going to be pulled. And I think that's absolutely appalling. I've got a second question, and that is going back to the question I asked Dorothy McHugh. And that is, what engagement on this recommendation has there been with the service users who have been using the leather bus?
Again, Mr Norton, would you like to come back?
Yeah, we are aware of the strong feelings with the service users who do use the service. And again, we have fed back the value that the service users that do use it do have. So, you know, we understand that the regular service users of the leather buses would like to keep them retained. So we haven't undertaken a specific engagement, but we are aware of their feelings on this service.
Okay, so there's been no engagement. I, as I say, intend moving an amendment to keep the service going meantime and to undertake a further review. I don't think things should go and add in for an item, but I think we should certainly be looking at improvements to the routes and keeping the service going. The point about the cost of this in relation to so many other things that we do, why are we doing this to old folk? It's just morally wrong.
Thank you. Can we move to Billy Wright? I think you're next.
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. My question to the officer is, what negative impacts have been identified in the integrated assessment? And I'm looking for an answer, especially on social isolation. I mean, we've been told a fair bit that the government has thrown a lot of money about loneliness and isolation, so maybe you could answer that question?
Again, Ewan, would you like to tell that to someone else?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Billy Wright. I was trying to find the paragraph, actually, in the report where we mentioned it, but we have had a look at the alternative options for this user group in terms of transport arrangements. alternative options for this user group in terms of transport arrangements. And they are outlined in the report under one of the paragraphs which you can't find at the moment. The, there is still the public bus network and the registered bus services, which as Dorothy mentioned, we do appreciate does have some gaps in it, particularly for mobility impaired. We've also got a very large private taxi service fleet in Dundee as well. And there's also some community options around the community cars. Certainly engaging with and continue to engage for external funding support and also other third sector providers as well. And we'll certainly support and welcome and work with anybody who comes to us or we identify potential options to have a look at mobility issues within the group as well.
That's fair enough, yes please. That's fair enough. But I don't think the message has probably been succinct enough. Because what value do you put on loneliness and isolation? And we have heard and I've asked the question, because some people, it's the only person that they actually speak to in the space of a day. Now, I'm not saying that a big bus driver with a bus full of passengers is going to make a difference one way or another. But I think the whole idea of the leather bus, people actually look forward to getting on it. And I know the people in my area have actually told me, you know, that they get quite excited that they're going on the bus and some of the neighbours go with them, they get a good chat, they enjoy the driver's chat. And a lot of the drivers are really quite nice people. And it actually cheers them up. So what price do you put on somebody, you know, with this problem actually getting it? And a lot of people are very shy, especially older people. And I must admit, I agree with Fraser. I don't think this bus should go off. In fact, I think you should be promoting it. You should be looking to see how you can get more people on the bus so that we could fill all the seats. And that might solve the problem, but I don't think you should be putting this out of hand. It's been out of commission for quite a while. I don't think you should be doing it at this point in time. Bring back the bus. Thank you.
But you can't come back in, this is officers' questions from the elected members only. Apologies for that. Counselor Ross, you're next on the list.
Yeah, thanks Convena. It was just a question I asked of the deputation and that is about recommendation B at 2.1 in the report. And that is around the out and about and shoppers' bus services, which will be retained once we're at a safe level of transmission for Covid 19. I'm just wondering, what are the mitigating circumstances around that? And how does that service help if this decision's taken tonight?
Ian Oberg, Ian?
Yeah, thank you Chair, thank you Counselor Ross. The out and about service and the shopper's bus, the intention is to restore those services when we've achieved a sustained national level on Covid transmission rates. And again, that's very much in reflection of the assumptions that we made previously, which I discussed with Bailey McPherson a minute ago. So we have learned from that, that when the rates do go low, they can re-emerge again. So we don't want to be back into a false expectation situation. And particularly with the planning that goes in, again, particularly on the out and about service as well for the, our third sector providers, do the organisation on that. So we are looking for a sustained period where we can gain some confidence and that we will be able to reinstate the services without any eighth hour cancellations of them.
Okay, thanks for that, Ian. Sorry, can I ask a supplementary, Convena?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, my question, I appreciate all of that. My question more was around how, when that service comes back, how it kind of mitigates the problems? If we remove the leather bus, how does it fill the gap?
Yeah, it doesn't, is the answer to that. They will still retain their previous service functions, which was for shopping and visits. So it's not going to be, the leather bus had a different role, which was filling in gaps in the public network for particularly vulnerable user groups.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, thanks Counselor Ross. Ian, something might be helpful to know is the promotion, the numbers are extremely low, as been mentioned. You know, we're talking the West End 2-3, Cloughbealocky 68, as per the report, and 7.4, which has been mentioned by others. Can you maybe give us an indication of how well this has been promoted over the years prior to the pandemic, please?
Yes, it has been. We have undertaken previous promotional drives on these, on these services. I've actually got our team leader for the Parking and Sustainable Transport Team in. So I'll ask him to, John Berry, to comment on the particular point of the promotional activities that have previously been undertaken.
Oh, sorry, John's here. John, would you like to come in please?
Yes, thanks, yeah. Prior to the pandemic, we had worked really quite hard to promote the three different leather bus services. We'd produced leaflets, we paid for them to be delivered door to door to every household along the route. So we're covering the sort of catchment area of the three different routes. We'd worked trying to, working with our communities officers to spread the word. Word of mouth was really important to us that people use these services. But the numbers of users remained stubbornly low. And, you know, we just couldn't get the numbers up above what is reported in this committee. The Balghair leather bus was, you know, particularly difficult to get the numbers up, maybe two to three different users a day in the sort of early part of 2020. So, you know, there were very low numbers and we had tried quite hard. We, I think we even had a radio campaign using Wave FM or, you know, those kind of local radio stations. So we had tried a number of ways, but I think the most thing was, you know, relying on word of mouth and people using the service and coming back to it, and it just wasn't happening.
Yeah, just follow on with that, John, with regards to the out and about service, which is, in my ward, extremely popular pre-pandemic and the shopper's bus as well. What's the feedback on that?
So, yeah, so the out and about bus is a very different model because these are trips, so there are outings that are organised with our, with our partners at Dundee Community Transport, who are a third sector group, and they organise outings and destinations. And then they promote those trips on different days of the week to different areas of the town. For example, they'll maybe take people up to, I don't know, a garden centre or a coffee shop or something like that. And those bus, those trips have been well subscribed to, oversubscribed potentially, people getting turned away. But they can only take a maximum, the maximum number of people on a given day because it's an outing. Fifteen people on a minibus go out and then fifteen people return. It's a very different model to the leather bus, which is a bit more like a bus route where we don't know exactly who's going to turn up on a given day. So the bus completes its circuit around the town, following its chosen route, which was very carefully considered. I'm not saying it was the perfect route, but we know we spent a lot of time considering where the buses should go, which places they should serve, but we just didn't get people turning out along the route to pick it up. And, you know, it was disappointing to me obviously that they never, they never took off in the way that I fully hope they would, despite all that promotion that we've done.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. Counselor McCrea, you're next, please.
Yeah, thank you very much, Convena. Can I draw attention to paragraph 9.3 in the report, which talks about the cost per passenger journey for each of these, for each of these services? Can I just ask whether the £15.91 per passenger journey is the highest subsidy for any transport service that Dundee City Council is currently subsidising or not?
If we're talking about bus services, I'll pass it over to Robyn.
This is the City Development Committee here, I'm asking about the City Development Committee's responsibilities.
The report's aimed at bus services we're talking about, so.
I'm what, I would, I would like a factual answer to that question, which I asked the director this morning. I would like a factual answer.
Excuse me, I'm speaking, can you be quiet and let me go ahead? I'll put it to the executive director who put his hand up. Executive, Mr. Press, press please.
Many thanks, Convena. I, I, I think that Counselor McCrea is alluding to other operations, including the air service. The support for the air service covers a whole range of activities. It covers three routes from Dundee. It covers support which ultimately benefits the airport as a whole and supports the retention of, I think the report later on refers to up to 100 jobs. So I don't think it's appropriate to compare on a like for like basis because it covers a significantly wider range of functions.
Thank you for that. Mr. McCrea, you like to come back? Counselor McCrea?
Yeah, that was, that was extremely helpful. I will be, you know, I mean, I mean, you're trying to win friends and influence people this evening, you know, I mean, it's bad enough when, when elected members are doing it, but when officers are joining in, it really is beyond the pale.
No comment on what you're saying now. Counselor here, please.
Thank you, Convena. I completely agree with what Bailey McPherson's saying in terms of the removal of this service. It is obviously a matter of concern for so, for some elderly people who will be vulnerable and who will need this service. And I'd ask if we could possibly look at A, restoring this service and B, look in some way at actually doing a consultation with service users so that we can actually get a proper route that they'd be prepared to use. I know that other members have already asked that, but really, I think that would possibly be a way forward. Cost of this service in terms of cost, you know, for the three leather buses at £54,000, given that I noticed later on in, excuse me, I asked my Policy and Resources Committee, we're looking at the council having a three million surplus company on the revenue budget. It's really quite a small amount of money and I think it is important for some very vulnerable people. And I think that we should be looking to try and maintain this service, to try and help older people. Let's simply ask you to look at that, please.
Thanks, Counselor here. That's the end of the questions. I think I have, Billy McPherson, I think you were first on my computer, I think.
Thanks, Convena. I have an amendment which I'll read, I'm sure it will be circulated. But basically, my amendment essentially removes the recommendation at 2.1A and replaces with, approves the continuance of the three leather bus services and instructs officers to engage with service users and local communities on possible improvements to leather bus routes. Officers are further instructed to undertake a further review of the operation of these services to report to committee in June 2022. And if I may just briefly, Counselor Duncan is happy to second my amendment. But could I, just before we come to that, could I maybe briefly explain why I am suggesting that? First of all, there's been a lot made of the cost, the per unit cost, if you like, of the Balghair leather bus. What nobody's told you is there's only five seats on it. It's a, it's an adapted minibus that's used in relation to transport at King's Park. And the service users tell me that it started off with eight seats, but they started using a minibus, which I presume has had seats removed to allow for more wheelchair users. So you could only get five people on it in the first place. The point I would make, I feel really let down in terms of what's happened. But what I feel far more let down, in terms of what I've been told or indeed not told in the lead up to this, which is pretty bad, it's not good, it's not good. But what I feel really, really upset about are speaking to the old folk that do use the service and will lose the service. One lady said to me, and perhaps the officers can give this some consideration, take this off tonight. She said, if they take it off, can I have a handrail up Riverside Drive at the side of the Botanic Garden? Because that's the only way I'll make it up to the service buses, because you cannae make it up the hill. And that's the point. The people that are using that are people who, in my ward, live in Edinburgh Gallery Drive, they live in New Hall Gardens, Mill Hall Crescent, streets where they have to climb a hill to get to a service bus. And in answer to Alan's question, and to be fair to Ewan McNaughton, he was fair in that, the other services are nothing to do with that. The shopper's one goes to sheltered complexes. They don't live in sheltered complexes. The Elton and the Bolt service, great if you want to go to the Glen Doig Garden Centre. I had a lady from Logie, that started up, a lady from Logie on the phone a couple of weeks ago saying how she enjoyed her trip. She actually lives on a good bus route though, she just happened to get a nice trip out, which is a great thing. But it's not the same thing. Now, the point is, I was convenor 10 billion years ago. And at that time, we had agreed that over time we would phase out the taxi card and bring in a demand responsive transport solution. That was in 2009. And Counselor Dawson will recall when he was the convenor, I used to stand up regularly and say, what's happened to the demand responsive transport policy that was agreed when I was convenor? And it's just never gone anywhere. Now, I just feel, the point I would also make is that the £54,600 isn't real money. It's purely opportunity cost. It's purely opportunity cost. It's what you do with these minibuses when they're not being used for school transport. Now, the officers jumped the gun and already getting rid of a tender service. So they're using one of them already prior to this decision being made. But in relation to the other two, they can't tell you what they're going to use it for. All they're telling you is they're going to take it away from the old folk that use it. And I just feel that it's a really sad state of affairs. One last thing, COP26, the environment is top of the heap. One lady said to me, my daughter will now have, if I'm going to get out at all, my daughter will have to come. She lives in Douglas, she'll drive to collect me in the West End of Dundee to take me anyplace. So in terms of environmental impact, this is, it's not just a kick in the teeth for the old folk that use the service. It's environmentally unfriendly as well because it will lead to more taxis and more private cars being used. And I just implore you to support my amendment. I'm only asking for it to continue to June 22 to be reviewed at that point. The old folk haven't had a chance to get back on the bus since the pandemic. They're desperate for it to come back and it's just really, really, really sad that it would be taken away from them. Thank you, Convena.
Thank you. Bailey Keenan, I think you have a motion or amendment as well?
I have an amendment as well and I'd obviously hope that it would be circulated. And I suppose the plea would be to Bailey McPherson to have a look at it and see whether there is the mutual ground that there is there to try to see if there is a way forward between the two motions where committee can agree.
That'd be between yourself and Bailey McPherson, I think.
Obviously, looking to obviously retain the leather bus as soon as is reasonable and taking into account the Covid situation that we have. Instruct officers to work in partnership with stakeholders to increase the passenger numbers, perhaps change route if necessary. You know, instruct officers to progress on that and instruct officers to carry out a passenger survey about the mobility and social inclusion benefits that these services provide to individuals. So I think that perhaps covers some of the points that were made within the deputation about, we're being told there is a negative impact to elderly people. I believe that there will be an impact to elderly people. But one, one way of finding that out for a definite is to have that level of survey so as to be, would be in a position to fully assess it.
Billy McPherson, would you like to accept that and work together or say your separate?
I don't, there is no merit in it being separate. I would, I would like the Labour Group to agree a compromise. I prefer my bit in relation to service users as opposed to stakeholders. And I think we should agree in all fairness to a further review in June 2022. But I like your last paragraph, Kevin. And that's a very good point because it's a point Dorothy made in hers. So if we could agree a compromise, which basically has mine plus the addition of your last paragraph, I would be more than happy that that went forward.
I would suggest we're happy enough with that.
That's, that, that, that's grand and I'm grateful to you for that, Kevin.
Thank you.
I'll take you as proposing, Billy McPherson, and you seconding.
Well, I think I already have and happy that Kevin seconds, but he said, made some very good points there.
Okay, Counselor Ross, I see you've got your hand up. Would you like to comment?
I'm just wondering, it might be too late for me to ask this question, but what would be the implication if we were to defer this report tonight?
That would have to be a proposal by yourself as a seconder, I would suggest.
But, but what I'm really wanting is some guidance on what would happen, what would be the? What would be the implication of that if we deferred it tonight? Would there be any implications?
Mr. Presswood, would you like to answer that?
I think from my point of view, it creates further uncertainty in terms of service users. The review is now in the public domain. I think it would be better if elected members took a decision on this now rather than extending the uncertainty.
Thank you for that. Based on what you put up.
Yeah, sorry.
Alan, come back in, sorry.
Sorry. I understand what Mr. Presswood's saying there, but operationally there wouldn't be any impact, would there? Because, I mean, these services aren't running as it stands and as it says it, you know, the services that are being retained wouldn't be coming back anyway until there's a reasonable level of COVID transmission. Who knows when that's going to be, you know, we're heading into the winter and it stands to reason that there's probably going to be a spike again. So I'm wondering, do we need to make this decision right now?
I think that Mr. Presswood is basically.
Where we're at with COVID. So I don't know. I would move that we defer it anyway, but I probably won't get a seconder.
That's the only option. You would like to do that or?
I would move that we defer the report until we know where, that we're in a better place with the pandemic and the transmission levels of COVID-19. But again, I don't think I'll get a seconder for that.
Do you have a seconder? Just ask the question? Nope, doesn't have. Sorry. I'm minded just to move the report as it is. I think it's, I for one am extremely disappointed that the fact that the service was never as popular as we hoped it would be. It was a service which was brought in to utilise, as it says in the report, services where buses were sitting in car parks, drivers were doing nothing. And it was an innovative in my way to have a demand responsive service. It hasn't taken off. It's clearly not as welcome as what people I thought would have wanted going forward. I have to remind everyone that we're saying about social isolation, I do appreciate that's a major issue. But we do have the Alton the Bolt service. They are a different type of service. I do agree with that. We have the alternative shoppers bus service. The Alton the Bolt service does help with social isolation and we try our best to make sure that is clearly there. We also support six subsidised routes across the city which went through committee recently at a cost of £240,000. So there's a clear determination by this administration to make sure we actually do provide services in areas where we need them and where unfortunately explore and others cannot provide that service. I think I have to go back to the user numbers as well in section 7.4. We're talking two to three and that's in the report for the Balgate, 68 and 628 in section 7.4 with regards to the Locky and Clippy bus. Again, that's my disappointment that it was never a service which people wanted. And maybe it's the time we really have to start thinking about the services that people want going forward. And a demand response of the service may be something that's going to happen in the future. And alternative routes is something that their council officers will work with, will work with the third sector. They will work with any organisation who want to come and provide these services in different parts of the city where they see it's a benefit. So my motion is to actually just put forward the report as it is with the recommendations as we have. Do I have a seconder? Counselor Rome.
Thank you, convener. I'll be seconding you. I don't intend to say a great deal about it because I think it's been very well covered tonight and we have a long evening left to go. And as you've already said, at the end of the day, this is a non-statutory service that the council brought in as a trial to cover gap in provision and we've seen that the numbers have been disappointing despite strenuous effort by officers over the years to promote the service. So I'll be moving motion and seconding you, convener.
Thank you for that. Can we go to the vote, please? Roger, sorry, Mr. Many?
Thank you, convener. Just to clarify for all elected members, the motion in the name of the convener seconded by Councillor Rome is approval of the recommendations in the report. The amendment moved by Bailey McPherson, seconded by Bailey Keenan, is circulated by Bailey McPherson with the addition of the final paragraph of Bailey Keenan's amendment regarding a passenger survey being carried out and a report coming back to committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we go to the vote, please?
Thank you. Convener.
Motion.
Councillor Alexander.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
Councillor Cordell.
Motion.
Councillor Dawson.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Rendall.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Bailey Soares.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor McCready.
Amendment.
Councillor McCarvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
The amendment.
Councillor Mara.
Amendment.
Councillor Richardson.
Amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
Councillor Hay.
Amendment.
Councillor Scott.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
Lord Provost.
Amendment.
Councillor Murray.
The motion.
Councillor Ross.
No vote.
Sorry, was that no vote?
Yes.
Yes. So that's 13 for the motion, 13 for the amendment and Councillor Ross with no vote.
So, Mr. Many?
On that basis, convener, you have the casting vote.
The motion's passed. Can I bring in a point of order from Councillor?
Yeah, it's me, Mark. Sorry, it's me, Mark. It's just with regards to your comment. No, just with regards to your comment about a fair amount of business still to go on, can I suggest that we suspend standing order 26?
Did the committee agree? Members agree to suspend standing orders? Can I get some feedback?
Agreed.
Convener, if there was any business that could be laid aside, it would ask officers to suggest that. I know that there is some things that are pressing, but I would rather just be with the items that are pressing and nothing else.
If we move on for the next maybe 10, 15 minutes and see where we are and go from there?
Thank you.
Okay. You just remind me in 15 minutes, there, Councillor Dawson.
Yeah, will do.
Thank you. Thank you. Apologies for that. Can we move on to the business, please, Ali?
Yep, we'll go back to item two, West End parking consultation.
Thank you. Bill McPherson, for you, sorry.
I'm going to be very, very brief in light of the comments a moment ago. And what I'm actually proposing, I hope is not controversial because I had spoken fairly recently with the head of Sustainable Transport and Roads regarding the parking consultation. I've had some concerns that the West End parking consultation, which actually did manage to complete its public consultation phase immediately prior to COVID in 2020, has, in March 2020, has just not moved any further forward. And this is because there's other consultations in other areas that have yet to take place. I've never quite understood why they're all sort of glued together, given that they are differing areas and they will come up with differing solutions. All I'm wanting to move tonight is, and Mr. McNorton and I did have a conversation regarding how quickly officers hope to bring this forward. I would just like a commitment, agreed at committee, that instructions, well, sorry, the committee instructs officers to bring forward to this committee proposals in relation to the West End parking consultation outcomes no later than the 31st of January next year. And I would hope that that can be agreed to. It was what I think officers with a fair wind hope to be able to do. But I think it's vitally important that we have some movement on this because I've been increasingly frustrated at the lack of movement and the number of constituents who come back and say, what on earth has happened to this? So that's basically where I am on it and I hope that it's sufficiently uncontroversial that committee can just agree to it.
I think firstly we'll look for some update on where we are from Mr. Berry. I think you're probably dealing with this.
I'm happy to take this one, yeah. The, so, yeah, we're just planning to release or communicate out to all members by the end of the week a webpage which we've developed, which provides some further detail on the consultation. We also have some scheduled virtual meetings which we'll hold as well, which we'll all notify of in mid-November. And the webpage also includes some frequently asked questions and probably most importantly a channel to submit comments in for the consultation through that form. The, just with regard to our advanced reports, timescales were month in advance that we actually have to prepare the reports. And then with the Christmas break, we might be a bit pushed for the 25th of January committee date. And the, I think it's the 6th of March would give us a bit more time on the consultation, just to complete that exercise through.
Yep, thank you for that. Bill McPherson, my view would be that this is a parking consultation in the three wards, i.e. the West End, Coleside and Maryfield wards. And I think it would be helpful if we would come to a consensus here where we actually look for that consultation to take place and allow officers to bring a report no later than the March committee. Would that be acceptable to yourself to avoid a vote?
In light of the hour, I'm prepared to go along with that. If there's a firm commitment, we'll have that for the 6th of March.
I would go for no later than the March. If Mr. McNorton can have it for January, we will get it in January. Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, that would be acceptable.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Next, please, Ali.
Item four, Climate Action Property Energy Conservation Programme. This is for approval.
This, Bailey, is in the report. It's actually due the benefits of what we're trying to go forward. It's massive investment. Any questions on this report? I don't see any questions, so we'll take that report as read. Thank you. Next, please, Ali.
Item five, Football Parking Events Related Traffic Management Scheme Order 2021. This is for approval.
Again, another report which is clearly explainable within the actual report itself. I see Counselor Cordell.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a question. It's maybe a slight segue, but obviously the congestion up there is caused by people visiting Tannadice and Denz. And I wondered if we'd had, as a department, any conversations with those clubs in ways that they may be able to support active travel to their games, perhaps with, you know, the addition of covered cycle storage for those who wanted to not take a car and maybe take active travel methods to get to the match. And I wonder if we'd had those conversations or if we would consider them. Thank you.
Very welcome, the comment. And I suppose that would be very beneficial to many because I think that using alternative forms of transport would be useful in getting to the football games. And I don't know if Mr. McNorton or Mr. Berry, who have been dealing with this, have any comments?
Yeah, absolutely. In short, convener, yeah, we'll continue to liaise with both football clubs on active travel and any improvements they can make to their current provision, both utilising public ground and their own private ground.
Thank you very much for that. And it should be noted that the clubs have been very supportive of this report, so quite welcome that as well.
Thank you. And could we then be notified accordingly of any updates in that respect?
Yep, I'll make sure I have. Thank you. Ali, I think, sorry, can I interrupt a second? In light of the hour and the part that we're actually wanting to push forward things quickly, I would like to take the form of the post as read unless I have any questions from members. So that's item 6 to 12.
Convener. Yes. I've got an issue in relation to one of the tenders that we'd just like to run by officers. Might no divide on it, but we'd like it heard.
An item?
On the tenders, item nine.
Thank you very much, Bailey Keenan. Anyone else have any comment on that proposal? Bailey Scott.
Convener, I was going to give some background to the names of the that have been proposed. I'll circulate an email to all members just for their information, but I did have a question that probably would need committee's approval about it. And that's in respect of, I have sent to the City Development Department a list of the names of the boats that made up the bulk of the fishing fleet in Brody Ferry for consideration as names for future phases. And I've just asked the committee that if there is further development there and more streets need to be named, if the names could be, if we could continue that maritime history theme and select the names from those that have supplied the city development, but with a report to committee to say what they are, but without going through the consultation part of it. And secondly, it was to ask if officers could engage with the developer there to see if it would be possible to have an information board put up that gives some background to the history of the names there. The nameplates do have, will have on them to commemorate the crew of, but it would be nice if there was an interpretation board there as well. But the background of the names, I'll circulate everybody.
This is in report six.
In report six, yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Presswood, could you get that reassurance?
We're happy to give the reassurance about considering further the proposals that have been forward. I do have a concern about introducing interpretation panels on this location and that's not in any way to undermine the historical significance. But we obviously regularly create new street names and very often they have a historical significance. And clearly if we started doing that, there might be then requests to retrospectively provide interpretation panels. And clearly the financial implications in the current climate would be very significant of that.
I was hoping, convener, I was hoping that the developer might be willing to contribute.
Now, hopefully that'll be the case. Maybe Mr. Presswood would like to liaise with him or one of his officers.
We're happy to raise that with the developer.
Thank you. Ali, in light of that, can we move to item nine, please?
Item nine, tenders received by head of design and property. This is for approval.
Bailey Keenan, you got to comment?
Thanks, convener. Convener, it's really in relation to Castle Street. We're now away to spend another £120,000 in Castle Street, you know, doing some work on a shop. We don't have any tenant ready to go in there. And the last time we done 33 Castle Street, and I questioned that one because we were spending £150,000. So we're now up to, in the region of £250,000 worth of spend in Castle Street. And you'd have to think there's quite a number of voids throughout the town in shop and retail. And I'm wondering, you know, are we making the right decision? One, spending the money without having someone to go in there that may well go in at the backhoe and take some of the stuff that we've put in out so as it best suits the need? Or I wonder if we should be looking at the city centre in general and looking towards perhaps developing some of the areas into housing where we have got demand and where it would bring around more people in the centre of the town and obviously more people then using the small businesses and shops that we've got there as opposed to spending this speculatively without having a tenant?
I think bringing people back to the city centre is a fantastic idea and we're looking at it within the city centre's strategic investment plan. But I'll bring Mr. Presswood back in on your comment with regards to Castle Street.
Many thanks, Chair. And I think members will be aware of the history of the various premises in Castle Street. As the councils withdrawn from them, they have become available for letting. In this case, it was a private sector business that was in there for many, many years. And the assessment of the building surveyors is that property is unlettable. There is asbestos and a very old shop within it. In order to let it, we do have to invest speculatively. I'm aware of the property that Bailey Keenan highlights further down Castle Street. And I know that both Bailey Keenan and Councillor McCready have raised, and under the Councillor Short have raised concerns about this. The property further down has been refurbished. Obviously, the pandemic is partially to blame, but it The property further down has been refurbished. Obviously, the pandemic is partially to blame, but it was refurbished. The works were completed prior to that. I understand that the type of premises is really only suited to sandwich bar or similar. So we are continuing to market. We do hope we'll find a tenant. And the premises under consideration tonight are a good quality, open shop unit which is easily accessible. It is towards the northern end of the street and it would generate a rental of around £20,000 per annum. So from a spend to save proposal, we either leave the property vacant or we invest the money and we try and attract a tenant. And there are a number of tenants interested in Castle Street. So we do have a confidence that we will be able to let this property and generate a commercial return on this investment if feasible.
Thank you for that. Bailey Keenan?
Yeah. Kavina, I still wonder if we're doing it in advance of having that tenant, given that, you know, we may well take some of the fittings out because it doesn't suit the needs of that individual. You know, I'm sure that if a business is looking, they're looking at location first that best suits their need. And, you know, and we've got a willingness to spend that kind of money, providing there's a tenant ready to move in. I know that one of the other ones in the shore terrace complex, I believe, when we fitted it out, the tenant came in and ripped most of what we'd put there out. So that means to me, like, we wasted a great deal of money. And I'm just asking officers to seriously think about the spend at this time when we're cash strapped as opposed to leaving it off a bit later and making sure that we've got a tenant available to go in. So is that that return on the money comes much quicker?
Again, Mr.
Chair, I think as officers, we're more than happy to continue that dialogue and seek input from members. It will not be to do a full shop fit. It will simply be to return it to a clear usable space with all dangerous materials removed and legacy fit out removed as well. So it will return it to a good quality blank space within which the retailer will do their own shop fit.
Hope I answered your question, Bailey Keenan. Bill McPherson?
Just a brief question in relation to Seymour House sprinkler, sprinkler teeth in phaser tank replacement. This is a relatively new building and I'm wondering why we're needing to spend £111,000 on replacing the sprinkler tank at this relatively early stage in its life?
Is Mr Martin on tonight? Neil, Neil there?
Yeah, thanks, Kavina. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. I don't, I don't have the actual detail on the failure of that, but it can be a number of reasons and whether it's been a, something that's been a default in the package. And obviously we would have recourse to the contractor at that stage. But this is something that's obviously been defective that the council have to look at. So what I'll do, I'll go back to our services engineer and check what the diagnosis is. And I'll come back to you with an explanation for the reason that we're replacing it at this stage.
That's absolutely fine. You know, the thing needs replacing. I'm not suggesting we don't agree this tonight. But I would be grateful for just an explanation as to how we got there. And if indeed, if there's any recourse to a third party in relation to the cost.
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
There's no more questions. So that's the city development business. And thank you for your acceptance of taking these reports so quickly this evening. And that's, thank you.
Thank you, Kavina. The final committee this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Good evening, colleagues. Given the hour and I hear the comments from Bailey Keenan, but looking at the agenda ahead of us, my suggested way forward is that we agree to suspend standing orders and make our way through the business because the first, well, items two to five and item 10 are obviously fairly time critical. The remainder of the reports are the standard updates, which if people have detailed questions, hopefully they've asked in advance. But I would intend on going through the business as is in hope we can make our way through that tonight rather than deferring. So that's my suggestion to committee. Hoping you'll agree to that. But Bailey Keenan, I'm conscious of your previous comment.
I mean, I was hoping that we would be able to agree within a certain time range and that the reports that weren't the need to be dealt with could be withdrawn and come back a little later, you know, rather, you know, but I realise that some of these reports here need to be dealt with this evening. So let's just go for suspend the standing orders and deal with.
Thank you very much. I see no other dissenting voices, so we'll just move on. Veronica?
Thank you. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Any declarations? Nope. Okay, thank you.
We also have a deputation request for item two on the agenda, University of Dundee pension provision. Do you agree to hear the deputation?
I think I'll take it as read that we will. So, yes. Veronica, can you confirm the order of the deputations? Thanks.
Hello. We have two speakers tonight. Phil Welsh on behalf of Unison Dundee University branch. The speakers are James Rourke and Sarah Brown. And Sarah Brown will speak on behalf of Unite Dundee University branch. Can I just double check that James and Sarah are present in the meeting?
I see your hand going up. James, if you can take yourself off mute, hopefully we'll be able to hear you.
Yeah, hello.
Great, excellent. Thank you for confirming you're here. So hopefully you've heard the kind of way we deal with deputation. So you'll have seven minutes to speak to committee. And then if you can hold on afterwards in case there are any questions from elected members, and then we'll move on to the item itself. So the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. As I said, I'm a Unite representative of Dundee University. I've been in one of the reps that have been involved in the consultation about pension changes at the university alongside colleagues in Unison and HCU. The consultation has been on for the past seven months. As you may be well be aware, what Dundee University are wishing to do is to close the pension scheme for the lowest paid members within the university. We represent, or I represent, we represent the workers across all the grades, but predominantly the ones that I represent are the staff that are on grades one to six. These members are workers in estates, technical staff, student services, administration and amongst other things. University want to close the pension scheme available to those within those grades, the lowest paid. The current pension scheme is a defined benefit scheme and they want to replace it with a defined contribution scheme. That is all meanwhile, those on grades seven and above, that's the higher paid people, they get to maintain the defined benefit pension scheme that they are currently in. Currently, there is two tier workforce at Dundee University. There's always been this terms and conditions for those on higher pay are different from those on lower paid. And that is just what we're told. That's the way it's always been. What has been proposed will mean that those on grades one to six will, could face up to 50% reduction in their pensions. The pandemic has been blamed as a catalyst for this change. The valuation of this scheme was done at a time, March 2020, when the world was at the start of the global pandemic. Pension schemes, as you're aware, are invested in stocks and bonds in the world over. The values of all these pension schemes were hard hit. Management using that large deficit in the pension scheme is a reason to close that scheme to future accruals. And to date, the deficit has actually recovered to pre-pandemic levels, but management are still insisting that they want to close the scheme because it is far too risky. Closing the scheme will mean that the risk won't disappear, it just won't disappear. It just means that the risk will move from the employer to the employee. Throwing money at something or just doing away with the scheme doesn't mean that the risk goes away. There will always be a risk. It's just that instead of trustees being there to make decisions about where that money is invested, it'll now be left to the cleaners, the security guards and not to decide where the money is invested for the future. Personally, I stand to loss sort of like £300 a month, but it's not about me. I was on the picket line today and I was able to work out for some people just how much they were, they were going to lose. A young female worker came to me asking me how much she would have been expected to lose. So she's currently on £20,000 a year. So she works in admin, I think. She was in tears when I had to tell her that she was going to be, if we were to stay in the current scheme, she would have a pension of just under £10,000 a year. That's, so like I say, she's 32, she's expected to work there for the next 40 years or somewhere, having been there for two or three years already. So she would be expecting to live on less than £10,000 a year and include her state pension. What Dundee University are proposing is that she will now be on less than £5,000 a year, which is less than £100 a week. That will be less than half of what the current state pension is. So work there for 40 years and you're going to get less than half of current state pension for working all those years. The, as I said, the pandemic has been blamed for this and closing the scheme moves the risk onto that. I would hope that in 20 years from now, we will look back at 2020 and 2021 and say the pandemic was a terrible thing, a difficult thing for us to all get through. But in that 20 years' time, there will be people that I was standing on the picket line with today that will still be feeling pension poverty and those that are coming behind them will still be feeling pension poverty. Whilst the management, if this goes ahead, will only increase the sort of gap between those on the lower paid and those on the higher paid. Like I said, they are just putting through reforms that mean that they get to keep their defined benefit contribution pension scheme. I can go on in more depth, but I realise that is very late and stuff like that. I've come here because the people that I represent are the same people that you represent. Most of the members that are in this scheme are Dundee people. We've done a survey of the people. These are all DD2, DD3 people. These are people from poor marginalised sort of backgrounds. These are people from Charleston, from Kirkton, from Beechwood and places like that. These are the ones that are going to be affected most by this. These are predominantly going to be women that are affected most, poor paid women that have been in through the pandemic, keeping the place open all this time. And I see there's questions in that comment, which is the first time for me. I would really like you to, if you can, support, support our action. We're trying to get back with management to speak about like that. You may well have seen sort of like councillor Mara had went to the First Minister's Questions and asked that to try and get sort of the university back, talking with the unions. And that, that so far has only resulted in one meeting in which the management turned up and they didn't have any other further proposal. They wanted to speak about the last thing, the things that had happened on the last seven months. We would like your support. If you think you can help us, we would totally appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, James. And you stuck perfectly to time that bang on seven minutes. So well done for that because that's not always easy either. As you say, there are a number of questions from colleagues on the call. So I'll just go first of all to councillor McGurvan, George.
Thanks, Chair. And nice to meet you, James. I hope your best wishes in your campaign ahead. My question's on process and there's no pressure, James, because there's other deputations for trade unions. But the question on process for me is the equality impact assessment. And as trade unions are aware, and employers are aware, it's designed to ensure that a policy or a scheme is, doesn't unlawfully discriminate against any of the nine protected characteristics. And some of those characteristics that you touched on predominantly female, some of the characteristics are age, sex, disability, etc, et cetera. So a couple of questions, James, just for clarity. Is there, is there an equality impact assessment live just now, running with this, with this current dispute? And I'm keen, if you can, keen to know an update on where you are with this.
Okay, so I can answer this or Sarah's probably better answer to that than I am. I mean, if Sarah wants to come in because she knows, she's done a lot of the hard work that we've done over the last few months on the quality impact assessment.
James, if it's all right, what I'll do is, because we'll be coming to Sarah in a moment for her deputation as well. And then if George wants to ask the same question at that point. But if you want to come in and say anything at this point, James, then feel free.
So yes, the quality impact assessment has been done and does show in fact that women and young people will be disproportionately affected. We estimate that 70% of the current members of pension scheme are women, so they will be the most affected by this. I will let Sarah answer the question later because she's more detailed than I am.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Anything else you want to pick up? George, do you have a supplementary? Sorry.
Chair, I'll get a supplementary with Sarah, thanks.
Yeah, no worries. That's fine. Billy Scott?
I have a couple of questions if I may, Kavina. James, you mentioned a 50% reduction from the current pensions. I just wondered where that figure comes from because there's so many variables that determine the value of a pension. And just wondered how that figure of 50% was reached. And my second question is in respect of an email that we were sent today from our chief executive that had been received from Ian Gillespie that says that he's made an offer to explore further review of defined benefit options. And I just wondered why that wasn't enough to get everybody back round the table.
Okay, so taking your second question first, he's only wishing to discuss defined benefit proposals, which is what we've been doing for the last seven months. Every time we've come to them with a proposal, whether it be going to a different scheme, paying more to stay in the same scheme, taking a break in the scheme and coming back to it for future valuations, they've all just been rejected out and just saying it's too risky. Anything with a defined benefit is too risky. They have said to us that co-op who, at the end of the day, sort of like give the okay for any sort of things that come from management, what Ian Gillespie said is they only have a mandate to discuss DC schemes. So they are going to have to go away back to co-op and ask if they can discuss DB schemes. But we're past the discussion stage because we actually need a commitment that we will still be able to retain a defined benefit state. We've done seven months of talking about why we can't get a defined benefit scheme. To go back, to go back to your first, your first question about the 50%. So whilst there is very many variables that can use, what you can't see in a defined contribution scheme is that there is a lot of variables because the risks go into the sort of like the employer, the employee. You can work out sort of like with some sort of degree of certainty how much you're going to have on a defined benefit scheme. If you were to stay in the same job, projecting it forward that two and a half percent wage increases, how long you've been there and stuff like that. So it's kind of, you are, I kind of assured you can work out. I started work there 30 years ago and I was able to sort of like work out roughly, if I was to keep on being an electrician, my wages, I would be sort of like X amount of years enough. If we were to go to defined contribution, we are, the risk all comes on to the person that's in that defined contribution scheme on where they put their money and whether it is a higher risk and, or a lower return or low risk and higher return. It's all these things. So it is the person, the actual pensioner, the prospective pensioner that will take all the risk and will have to make those decisions. So I can work out that if I'm there 40 years, I will be on roughly half of my salary currently the way it is today. On a fine contribution, you don't have those certainties.
Yeah, thanks for that. And I appreciate you don't have those certainties in a defined contribution scheme. But I'm still not sure how you came up with the figure that there would be a differential of 50% between the defined contribution and the defined benefit schemes.
I worked that out myself. So using their, they have given us projected figures, samples of people. Someone that was 20 starting work at Dundee University now and working for the next 40 years. They have given us someone at 30 working for the next 30 years, someone at 40. So they have given us examples and in these examples it shows that they will be 50% more so.
All right. Okay, thank you. That's, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Flynn next?
Yeah, thanks, Kavina. I took the opportunity to visit you the other day at the university and met a few of the protesters outside and quite rightly so. I've been through this myself about two years ago, pre-pandemic. And the difference between a defined benefit and defined contribution is substantial. And I think that's the devastating information you get from this is the fact that the younger people and women who tend to be part-time jobs, et cetera, will be the hardest in this whole process. And it's absolutely shocking to actually see this happening in my view. Can I just ask you, James, how many people we're actually talking about are going to be affected by this? You haven't mentioned that in your, it was a seven minutes and 10 seconds we'd have got that, but you need to get an idea of how many it would be.
Okay, so, and this is why this is a Dundee problem, you know what I mean, or a Dundee thing that we need to sort out. thing that we need to sort out. There's four thousand people approximately work in Dundee University. So it's a large employer, okay? Of those fifty percent, so just less than two thousand are in the grades one to six. So let's say two thousand people, there are just over one thousand people in the actual pension scheme that they're wishing to change. So there's one thousand people that are in the scheme, one thousand people not in the scheme. The one thousand people that are not in the scheme are possibly made up predominantly of lower paid women and stuff who don't feel that they can sort of like contribute to that scheme because it's too expensive.
No, thanks very much for that. And I think I've worked there forty years ago, so it gives you an insight. I was a technician at the university. So I know exactly where I'm coming from. A lot more people worked there at the time. And I think that's the big difference. When you've got asked that previous question with the percentage calculations, there's a big difference between the contributions that are made by the employer and the employee. That's where the difficulties come into that. And as I said, in making that choice of whether you put that money in, when you're scraping every penny when you're in a certain pay grade, and I think that's the difficulty there. But thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, councillor Ross, you're next.
Thanks, convener. It's just to say thank you, James, for coming along tonight and thanks for your deputation. I thought it was helpful to hear you explain it in the terms that you did, because obviously it's quite a complex situation. And obviously, I probably would imagine a lot of the people who will be impacted by this have found it difficult to try and get their head around exactly what's happening. So thanks for putting it in those terms for us. I think probably, you know, with Dundee being the city that it is, I think we probably all know someone or we'll know somebody who knows somebody that's going to be close to this. And I'm no different. And because of that, I went to the picket line two weeks ago or three weeks ago. I'm not exactly sure when, but at that time, whilst I was there, actually, there was people from the university. I didn't catch who they were, but I know they were quite senior, who were out talking to the people who were striking. And afterwards I was asked, there was a member of the press there and I was asked, did I feel that anything that the university had said to the people who were there, had it alleviated their fears in any way at all? And the simple answer I gave was no, it clearly didn't. In fact, it seems to agitate people even more. And it was difficult to hear, obviously, so I wasn't able to hear exactly what was being said. But I think my reason for speaking to you is to say that, you know, obviously you're here tonight looking for support. And obviously, you know, councillor Flynn said he's been there as well. And I think that, I think, certainly for me anyway. And I've been to the picket line and I would go again if need be, but certainly I think you'll see good support from around the chamber tonight, certainly for myself anyway.
Thank you very much.
That was less of a question for the deputation councillor Ross, but I will let you off. Bailey Sawyer's next.
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. James, you just mentioned in response to all these questions about a thousand folk in the scheme. Has any, have you done any calculation? As you mentioned, one individual you'd spoken to and she was going to lose about five thousand pounds a year. Have you done any impact as to what the total loss of pensions across those thousand people might be on an annual basis or?
No, early on in the consultation, I'm a geek that likes figures, I'm sorry and apologize. So in those early days, people came to me asking them sort of like what differences can make. And a lot of the times, like, I would say, we all hope to live till at least twenty years beyond retirement, if God forbid. Dundee doesn't have those kind of averages, but if we did, and sort of like myself, I was able to work it out because I didn't want to work out for other people and then see them crying, basically. But I worked it out for myself. And I was to live over twenty years, I would be losing a quarter of a million pound over twenty years, which is a large sum of money, but hopefully in the twenty years when I do retire, it's not as much. But I personally haven't worked out how much it would actually be the difference to me. I'm sorry, I just for everybody, there are complex figures and stuff like that.
Do appreciate that, but it does sound that it's going to be, it's going to have a huge economic impact on the city because all the folk in receipt of pensions, you know, and probably some of them aren't going to be that great, but half of not very great is pretty awful. And this is going to be a huge impact on local businesses and local shops and such like. So I think as councillor Ross just said, you'll find a huge degree of support across the committee tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. There's two further questions that I am seeing, James, but I am conscious that Sarah still has to speak. So Sarah, you might be getting off lightly because everybody might ask the questions of James, but I will let you in as soon as we're finished with the questions to James. So I think next on my list is Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, convener. And as others have alluded to, I today joined the workforce on the picket line to show support and solidarity for what is a very, very just cause. I mean, the way this hits the predominantly female and the less well-paid staff, I think we can all empathize with, understand and give our utmost support to. And it was good to see such a large turnout outside Tower Building today. My question really, James, is in relation to how we do our best to help support you and your colleagues in this. Sure, we're discussing this tonight. Quite a number of us now have done to show our support in person. As was alluded to earlier, Ian Gillespie has written to our chief executive. I think we've all had the opportunity to read that letter. We should be replying to that, but what particularly do you want us to do as members of Dundee City Council to do our utmost to support yourselves in such a just cause?
Well, that's a very good question, a very big question. We would definitely like to get back to discussing that, but we have been very clear that we do not have a mandate from our members to discuss a DC scheme because of the effects it is going to happen in Dundee, because of the effects it is going to happen on these individual people. This is also, like I say, in the backdrop of the higher paid people get to keep their defined benefits. So we would definitely love to get around the top. The strike went in tomorrow. If they could turn around and say, we can guarantee there will be a defined benefit scheme for you to come into, even if it was adjusted and stuff like that. So we are willing to talk, but they need to come to us and talk about stuff that we haven't talked about the last seven months.
Yeah, I understand that. And I think that's a point we will want to get across when we reply to the principle. But I'm grateful to you for that, James.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I think your final question, James, you'll be pleased to hear, is councillor Rendell.
Yeah, thanks, convener. It was really, I don't know if you'll have the answer to this, but it's just, do you happen to know how many of the women, that you mentioned is a high percentage of women that will be affected by this, who are clearly lower paid? Do you happen to know how many of them will be over sixty, you know, women that are born in the fifties? Because they'll suffer a double whammy of not getting their state pension until they're sixty-six, sixty-seven, you know? So I just wondered if you know what that figure is?
I don't know off my hand, sort of off the top of my head, what those figures are. Thankfully, if they are at that age and they've not got many years to retire, they will be less affected just because they have less years in their not so good value scheme, you know what I mean? So they have lots of years in the DB scheme. That'll kind of outweigh the fact that they're going to be in the DC scheme if it was to go ahead. It is really the younger members that will be affected the most because they'll have more time in the inferior scheme. I don't have the figure.
No, that's okay. I just wondered. Thanks for that.
Thanks very much. Thanks, James, for responding to all those questions as well. I really appreciate you coming along and articulating so well the challenges that the staff are facing. And I'll defer, as you mentioned, to Sarah now. So Sarah, can I welcome you and give you the floor? Just as I said with James, you'll have seven minutes and then I'll open it up to some questions from members. But I anticipate you might have slightly less because they might have all been asked of James, but I'll hand over to yourself. Thanks.
I think there's been a wee bit of confusion. There's two Sarahs. There's a Sarah from Unite and a Sarah from Unison. So to save lengthening your meeting any longer, I suggest that Sarah from Unison speaks.
Okay, thank you. I only had one on my list, so apologies about that. So, okay, over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The dispute between the recognized campus unions and the University of Dundee, we are requesting that the committee supports the motion before you, as put forward by the Dundee CLP. The branch requests that all elected members of committee support the current motion. The UODSS pension scheme is the university's pension for its lowest paid workers, grades one to six. It is a defined benefit scheme. The proposal from the university is for a defined contribution scheme, which if implemented, could leave an individual up to forty percent worse off financially in retirement. The university is implementing this DC scheme on its lowest paid, predominantly female employees by a management who earn on average between a hundred and fifty thousand pounds and two hundred and fifty thousand pounds per annum and who will not be affected by these pension changes. The viable alternatives, one, joining the local government pension scheme. This would require the university to make a specific request and to gain approval by a government minister. All we received in response was some incorrect information about the likely cost of the scheme. And we were told it would not be viable as the university was not prepared to take on any additional risk beyond its existing historic liabilities. Two, joining the USS, the pension scheme open to those above grade six. This was immediately dismissed as unaffordable. Three, retaining the UODSS but offering a DC scheme to run alongside for those who apparently believe the current scheme to be unaffordable. We also suggested that the existing scheme could offer a reduced cost, reduced benefit option alongside the default option. Four, closing the UODSS to new members but retaining membership for existing staff. We don't support this, but we would have been prepared to put this option to members. Five, a reformed UODSS with cuts to benefits. Some quick calculations were done on this by the director of finance and it was deemed to be still too risky and unaffordable. The suggestion was increasing the normal retirement age to state pension age and reducing accrual rates. This would represent a big loss for members, but would retain certainty of outcome in retirement and therefore place some risk on the university going forward. It is like the arrangements made by the University of Aberdeen. Six, a hybrid scheme like the USS. No work was done on this whatsoever. In general, Unison suggested that we would be prepared to review all risks and proposals in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. This was partly because we are confident that the current market turbulence is exceptional and it is not appropriate to base long-term pension prospects on a single year. We know there is a deficit. We are prepared to find solutions. But what our members are not prepared to do is accept a detrimental scheme which will leave them forty percent worse off in retirement. The university attempted to try and avoid strike action this week by making a new offer. That offer yet again asked us to bring forward suggestions for a DC scheme. Our members will not accept this and have asked the university to think again. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much, Sarah. That's really appreciated. And again, thank you for sticking to time as well. So I'll just go to my colleague, so councillor McGurvan.
Thanks, Chair. I think I've got the wrong Sarah. I think I've got Sarah for Unison instead of Sarah for Unite. But Sarah, what if you could, what I'd asked James previously and his comments about the Equality Impact Assessment, what's Unison's take on it in its current forum?
I think it's other Sarah you need to answer that question. I'm really sorry.
That's fine. What I'll do, I mean, if members are agreeable, I will bring in Sarah because she was part of the initial deputation. So I think George, I did say you could ask the question of, it's the same way you intended. So if we could do that. I've said you'd oblige councillor McGurvan and come in on that point.
Yeah, thanks very much. Sorry. Yeah, so all the unions have been involved in the Equality Impact Assessment at our request. Unfortunately, it's been a really slow process and it's taken three months for the university to respond to our questions that were asked at the start of the consultation. The Equality Impact Assessment has thrown up quite a number of equalities issues. There are concerns about the legality of what's about to be implemented, which our unions have raised with management. And I think I'm right in saying that from Unite's point of view, we've not had a response yet. So there's real concerns, I think, around equalities, around gender equality, but also equality across age and others. But unfortunately, the university also doesn't adopt an intersectional approach. So just taking councillor Rendell's point about older women, we can't really tell that because the way the data is gathered, we can't actually do an assessment in terms of age and sex. But yeah, so seventy percent of current members of the scheme are women. And we also know that it's going to disproportionately affect young people. And we're hoping to positively engage with the university to push the assessment so that we can do a bit more analysis. But concerns around that in terms of people who live within Dundee and especially around gender equality.
Thanks very much, Sarah.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we'll go back to questions for Sarah Ashwood, so not to confuse things any further. Bailey Scott, please.
Yeah, I think my question might have been better directed to the university. And it's just a pity we don't have someone from the university here on the management side to speak to this. But my question is in relation to the two pension schemes that are in operation. And I can understand in the pension schemes, when you get into big deficit, that something needs to be done to address that deficit because a deficit could have an impact on the future benefits that might accrue from a pension scheme. But I wondered what the difference is between the grade one to six scheme and the grade seven scheme? Is the grade seven scheme in deficit as well? And do the university have input into that grade seven and over scheme? Or is that a UK-wide one that's not controlled by them, but other people have influence over it?
It's a detailed question, Bailey Scott, but I'll ask the deputation if.
That's why it would be handed.
Yeah, no, it would. You're right. Sarah, do you want to come back and provide any info you've got?
Yeah, the grade seven and above one is a UK-wide scheme. So it's not controlled by the university itself. So there are other people who have input into that. The one that concerns us is a local scheme which is run by the university. So they can decide to make changes to it, which they have done. Initially, when I first signed up to the pension scheme thirty years ago, it was a final salary scheme. And about ten years ago, they decided to change it to a defined benefit scheme, which we went along with. But now they're trying to change it again and we're not happy with that because we can't afford to live on what the suggested or projected figures are for our retirement.
Okay. And do you happen to know if the grade seven and above one is in deficit as well and how much that might be?
I don't actually know that, but I know that there are proposals to be making some kind of changes to their pension scheme as well. But I'm not quite sure what it is exactly.
Okay, thanks very much for that.
Okay, thanks. Bailey Sawyer's next.
I think my question's mainly been answered in response to councillor Scott, but Bailey Scott, sorry. But I just wondered, is there a reason that there's two separate pension schemes or is that lost in the mists of time?
That's pretty much lost in the mists of time. It's always been like that, basically. So then suggestions have been made. So then suggestions have been made to allow us into that scheme as well. The answer we were given was no, and when we asked why, because that's the way it's always been, is the response we got.
Which isn't really a very good answer, is it?
No.
Is the national scheme, is it too simplistic to say that's for teaching staff? And the scheme that's being impacted at the moment is non-teaching staff?
That's correct, yes. The scheme being impacted at the moment, as James said, is mainly sort of admin staff, tradespeople from estates and buildings, lab technicians, all the sort of front-facing people who sort of deal with students on a daily basis and try to provide the best service possible to them.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you for that. And I think the last question, Sarah, will be from councillor Malone.
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. Thank you, Sarah, for your deputation. And as with other members, I've taken the opportunity to visit the picket line and was delighted to be invited to speak in the city square at the rally at the beginning of this dispute. And then when I made my contribution, I talked about the educational service that is provided by Dundee University and how there should be no differentiation in the delivery of that education service in terms of how people are treated beyond that. This is clearly a dispute that's about that differential, the difference of treatment. And people are going to lose significant sums of money. I think Bailey Sawyer alluded to the fact that the impact this could have on the city. But what I would like to know is, although I've visited the picket line and I've seen how great the morale is on the picket line, I've got experience of what it's like to be involved in industrial disputes and post-industrial disputes. How do you feel the mood is at the moment amongst the people who are being affected by this dispute in terms of when they actually go back to, will these relationships be normalised? Or do you think there's a potential for ongoing disharmony within the ranks because of the way they're being treated?
To be honest, I think there is the possibility of continued disharmony. Because although this dispute is mainly about our pensions, there's lots of other things that have been going on within the university over the years that we've all just kind of put up with. And it's all kind of coming to the fore now. So this has kind of opened a big can of worms, if you like. So there's so many other things that we're now not happy about. So I think, once we get this sorted, I think there might be other issues come up within the university.
Thank you for that, Sarah. I mean, I think this is absolutely crucial. The legacy issues associated with industrial disputes are absolutely, it's absolutely vital that you have a good relationship between the trade unions and management. And that's what's being affected at the moment. And we value Dundee University as an employer in the city. It's one of the shining lights in the city. And I think it's been tarnished by this whole thing. And so, like other members, I'm more than happy to express my solidarity with you physically and emotionally. And all the best in the campaign going forward.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Charlie. So I think that's the last question. Can I thank James and both Sarahs for your contribution tonight and for articulately setting out the real impact for all staff? And I think you've heard from across the political spectrum tonight, and we'll get on to the substantive issue, but there is a huge degree of support for your campaign and, you know, your struggle right now as well. But with all that said, we'll move on to the item itself as we normally do under such circumstances. And I'll hand over straight to councillor McCready.
Thank you very much, Convenor. Hopefully, people will, I think people will have received their email in the last few minutes with the motion. And people will also have seen what in effect was the majority of the motion apart from the last paragraph in an email that I sent about around a month ago at the start of the first industrial dispute. So I know we've had a few heated moments this evening, but I would hope that the council will speak with one voice and with unanimity to say that this is not good enough. And I want to thank James and both Sarahs for articulating the issues that face workers at the University of Dundee at the moment. I think after hearing, and thank them very much indeed for staying so long, you know, they were warned, but I don't think they believed me. But anyway, thank you very much for your endurance this evening. I think after hearing from those deputations, it is important to think about the impact of the proposed changes from the University of Dundee to the pensions of some of the poorer paid staff at the university and how that will impact predominantly on a female workforce. And also, I think, as Bailey Sawyer and others have said, councillor Malone, it will have an impact on the economy of the city. These are people that live in the city. These are people that will continue to work in the city, live in the city when they retire. This will have an impact on the whole city. So I think it's important. That's why we have a role here. I want to thank, you know, many people have highlighted that they've been along to the picket line. I think I want to thank those colleagues across parties who have already indicated their support for the statement, which is the basis for the motion which I'm moving this evening. And thank those that attended the picket line. I was there this morning and I know a few others were. And I know other people have been along, as they've said, over the last few weeks when there has been action. I'd also say, as a local councillor, indeed as a graduate of the University of Dundee and indeed a former employee of the University of Dundee, I want to acknowledge the importance of the University of Dundee, as councillor Malone and others have done, to my ward, to the wider city, to the region, to our country. It's a force for good across the region. It's a force for good, bringing good jobs and educational opportunities for many people in our communities. So it's very disappointing to see proposals brought forward which will impact on the pension income of already existing workers who are relatively poorly paid. I want Dundee University to be a good employer, to treat its employees well and ensure that they have dignity in retirement. I think we should be campaigning for dignity in retirement for everybody in the city. But I think there are proposals here that will make life significantly worse for people, as we heard. You know, up to, you know, even as much as quarter of a million pounds in a twenty-year retirement, which is, you know, which we also need to recognise for some people in the city of Dundee is, you know, quite an ambitious level of time to live after retirement. So I think, you know, we need to bear that, you know, we need to bear in mind the, you know, the situation of our city. I would say it's not our job to negotiate here, but we do have a role as civic leaders to say to the University of Dundee that we want them to be a good employer, to lead by example. And I think, you know, I think Bailey McPherson, I think, mentioned the email that people have received from the principal today. And, you know, that's the, I think, hopefully the last paragraph of the motion covers that, that, you know, we will, that if this motion is accepted tonight, we'll reply to the principal to tell them that Dundee City Council has a view about how this is going forward. So I want the University of Dundee to engage in meaningful negotiations with Unite, with Unison and with the small number of UCU employee members who are also involved in this strike action to ensure a fair and just settlement can be found to this situation. So on that basis, I move the motion in my name and hope that the committee will support it and stand up for these workers in our city and stand up for dignity in retirement for everyone in our city. Thanks very much, Convenor.
Thanks very much, councillor McCready. I'm hoping you won't require a second hour, but I'll offer the opportunity to councillor Manna in the first instance because he has indicated. Thanks, Convenor. Thanks to councillor McCready for ringing this forward. And thanks to the deputations who came along. I spoke to a couple of the representatives from Unite, I believe, on the picket line this afternoon. So they've had a long day of it and thanks for putting up with our verbose blathers for the last few hours. I mean, it's pretty clear that the offer that's been put forward, that's been on the table from the university is untenable, unsupportable, but it's frankly unjust. You know, we have to make sure that people are back round the table, but on a basis that they can actually put forward some kind of agreement that does not impose such huge cuts to the conditions that the lowest paid workers at the university are currently on. So I did, as Mr Rourke mentioned, raise this in Parliament. And the First Minister made clear in Parliament that she thought, actually, it was unacceptable to the terms that the university were bringing to the table. So not only do we have the support of, it sounds like, and I hope, the whole of the council, but the First Minister as well. And so I've engaged with the management of the university on this, have spoken to all the trade unions involved on several occasions. And I have to say, I've been very impressed by what the union representatives, the concern and care that they have on the issues of equality that they've raised tonight, issues of gender equality, the impact on women in particular, pensioner poverty. And so for all the people involved, their care and concern for our city and what it's going to do, but also for the university, because it's an institution that's pretty clear to me that they have been proud to work for. And they believe as a very important employer in the city. And I would say on that, as a recent and long-term employee of the university, I share that view. It's vitally important to the city, as councillor McCready has said. And we know that there are many universities across Scotland whose balance sheets are deeply in the red that's driven by the fact that the Scottish government doesn't pay the full cost of Scottish education, expects universities to drive money from foreign markets to pay that price difference. But what we've got to be absolutely clear is the cost of that shortfall in money should not be borne by the lowest paid workers working for those institutions. It's totally unacceptable. So in full support of councillor McCready's motion, I would say I would be keen that we write also in response or copy the response that we send individually to all members of the university court, who are going to be vital as this goes forward. So they know that actually, as the civic representatives of the city, what the position of the council is and that we believe that there has to be a different solution found. So we should be writing to them as well. And I would say that my last contribution around that is that the university must resource the negotiation appropriately. The number of times now I've heard about the delays in actually answering the questions, the lack of a kind of proper response to things like requests for the Quality Impact Assessments and legal challenges that might be raised to that, this has to be done properly because every day it drags on, these workers are losing pay, the ones that are on the picket line, but also it damages those relationships and for one of the most important institutions in the city. So thanks to the trade unions who've come and made their representations tonight and for speaking on behalf of all their members. Thanks, councillor McCready. Now, sorry, councillor Manna. Councillor McCready, councillor Manna suggested an addition to your motion. So I think I saw you nodding, but can I just formally ask if you accept that?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'll bring in Bailey Sawyer's and then hopefully we can move to the formal position. Bailey Sawyer's.
Yeah, I'll be very, very brief, Convenor, given the hour. Just to reassure the deputations that the administration is absolutely committed to supporting the motion as brought forward by councillor McCready. One point I just wanted to mention from a kind of personal note is I'm the convener of the Tayside Pension Committee, which covers the three local authorities in Tayside and a number of other voluntary sector organisations. And even the thought of trying to change the benefits that our pensioners both, well, obviously not current pensioners, but future pensioners might enjoy, is just, it's beyond belief, really. The view would be saying, you know, we've got a situation at the moment where there are employee contributions, there was a triennial valuation, and, James, I picked up your point where valuation at eighteen months ago or so obviously had been hit by Covid, but certainly the Tayside Pension Fund has recovered massively since that period. And just the thought of trying to tear up these years of agreements with who are the lowest paid workers is just quite frankly reprehensible. And I wish you all the support we can give.
Thanks, Bailey Sawyer. Certainly endorse everything you said there. Now, I'm going to break my own golden rule and I will allow Bailey Scott to come in, given that we have been taking this conversation forward in that kind of cross-party sense. So Bailey Scott.
I would just say, Convenor, I don't think you would need to move to a formal situation because I agree with the motion from councillor McCready. I don't necessarily agree with all the wording of it, but it would be churlishly to suggest changes to it. Pensions are really complicated and I don't even start to say that I understand them at all. And it would really be really helpful to hear from the university tonight to answer some of the more detailed questions I would have had about these, about the pensions. I think if there's a deficit in it, it needs to be addressed because that does have an impact on the future benefits that are available to that. But I don't think the university have gone the right way about dealing with that. And I don't think they have convinced the workforce of the need to make these changes in any great way either, otherwise we may not necessarily have been in this position. I have a lot of sympathy with the suggestion that was made by the deputations that if there was to be any changes, then it should be to future members of the scheme and not current members of the scheme. And that, to me, seems to be the way to proceed if the university are looking to make changes and reduce that deficit on the pension scheme. So although I don't agree with all the wording in the motion, I wholeheartedly agree with the spirit of it. And the bottom line is that both parties need to get together to try and come up with a solution that is of benefit to everybody.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to summarise that you agree. So with all of that and with everything that everybody else has said, I hear no dissenting voices. So can I take the motion before us as the unanimous view of committee? Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. And thanks very much again to James and both Sarahs for your stamina and your attendance tonight. I appreciate it. Veronica, we'll move back to the agenda, please.
Thank you. We now go to item three on the agenda. National Care Service Consultation. You have the report before you.
Now, I think it's fair to say that we'll all have views certainly on the consultation, the contents of that consultation. And I have an amendment on behalf of the administration which would ask officers to ensure it is in front of everybody and accessible to everybody. And rather than have any preamble, I'll just open it straight up to any questions to officers or any comments that you would like to have. And Bailey McPherson, I see you've got amendment as well, as does Bailey Keenan. So if we can have them all circulated, because some of them may be more similar in nature, that'd be helpful. I may also suggest taking a couple of minutes. I know that we are at ten past nine, but some of these, I would imagine, are going to be fairly lengthy. So we might want to take, consider just a couple of moments to read them.
John, you've managed to mute yourself.
Thank you. A real estate. Now, can I suggest that we perhaps just take a few moments? I'm not suggesting that we come off the call, but certainly take a few moments to read over the amendments in order to ensure that we are clear on what everybody's saying, where there might be areas of agreement. So if we just take a few moments to read them, they should be in your inbox.
You've done it again, John.
I deliberately muted myself there, so hopefully you heard the end of the sentence, which was, we'll take a few moments to read the email and then we can pick it up at that point. So I'm going to mute myself now. Well. Okay, I hope everyone's had an opportunity to at least read over the amendments that are in your inbox. And the three are somewhat different, some significantly so. So, I mean, if I can just, first of all, start, since I suggested my amendment first, which is... which is that I think there is a huge degree of agreement in some respects. Particularly on the intention to create a national care service. And I know it was in at least two of our manifestos in terms of political representatives around the city chambers. Not that we're there, but you know what I mean. And I think that there is much merit, given everything that we've went through over the last number of years in considering how we best support and deliver adult care services in particular. I think I also want to recognise the amount of resource being put behind that. I think six hundred million pounds is significant. It is clear that the priority in terms of health and wellbeing and the commitment is there to see this come to fruition in a way which hopefully delivers a better service. I think the amendment that we are proposing also seeks to recognise that there are areas with the original report and consultation that will give rise to some further questions. And we are calling that out very specifically and saying that in our view, some of those services are best placed within local authorities and delivered as such as well. So as a quick summary, I'm conscious of delay hour, but I'll ask, thank you Bailey Sawyers for your formal seconding. I will now move to, I think it was Bailey Keenan next.
Like yourself, I think there is merit in some level of national care service. But obviously take the view that the building blocks of that are within local government, probably a bit a bit more forceful than your own amendment or your own motion. You know, I think that the local government have been at the heart of the Covid situation. And you know, I think if we dismantle local government, then the ability to cope with such a pandemic in the future would be greatly affected. The the sort of issues around the Feely report have got lots to agree with. Very much agree with the fact that there needs to be a wage structure within the care sector that encourages people to stay and retain staff within it. There needs to be a better wage, we need to recognise that there needs to be that level of investment there. And it's no seen as a burden because the money that they earn obviously gets spent in local economies. And it's so it's a it's a bottle of spade because it will come back in tax in other ways. So, you know, we need to receive that money, the six hundred million released as soon as and no wait on a report to see how we best shape things up. I think like wage structures and the like would be agreed nationally at COSLA. So there is an ability for to put that structure in that would see something that's uniform from one end of the country to the other. But I think there is a need for locally to be making decisions about the health needs of our community and the longevity and the demographic of our community. And hence the reason that we have worded our motion up in that way. I think accepting that there's to be a bottle of quango is within your own motion looks that way to me. And I'm thinking that's a retrospective move and it should leave decision making in local government.
Okay, thanks Bailey Keenan. Sorry, who said that?
And I'll have a second though.
Yeah.
I'm happy to second Bailey Keenan and agree with everything he said. I think we we're proud of our services in Dundee and should be trying to retain some of them. Thank you.
Thanks Bailey, and I do want an apology to Billy McPherson. So on my screen, I could only see Kevin, so apologies. Fraser, Fraser, do you want to move your amendment?
Would it not be sensible if you just took one against the other? You're not going to take a place together, so in terms of standing orders, would it not make sense? Yours versus his and then mine versus, well, it'll be yours because you'll be him.
Thank you, Billy McPherson. After you retire from politics, you can come back as a committee services rep if you so wish. Thank you for keeping me right, I think that's probably the right course of action in order to keep things as simple as possible. So I think I'm intent on moving the amendment that I've proposed. And I'll not go into all the detail other than to again reiterate the point that I've made and acknowledge that what we've tried to do is make sure that we're acknowledging the points which are fundamentally in both amendments. But also acknowledge that if it was to go forward, we expect a degree of local input into that. So I'll just move on that basis to the vote and then we can take the next amendment thereafter, Veronica.
Thank you, the motion by the convener and seconded by Bailey Sawyers is that the report be approved subject to the further amendments circulated by the convener. The amendment by Bailey Keenan and seconded by Bailey Wright has been circulated. Convenor.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
Councillor Cordell.
Motion.
Councillor Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Rendall.
Motion.
Billy Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome. Bailey Sawyers.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor McGrady.
Amendment.
Councillor McIrvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Mara.
Amendment.
Councillor Richardson.
Amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Motion.
Councillor Hay.
Motion.
Councillor Scott.
Motion.
Bailey McPherson.
No vote.
Councillor Duncan.
No vote.
Councillor Murray.
Motion.
Councillor Ross.
Motion.
So that's seventeen for the motion and six for the amendment.
Thanks very much, Bailey McPherson, we'll go to your amendment.
Yeah, I'll be very, very brief, councillor Duncan is kindly going to second me. Our our stated position is not yours, convener of the Labour parties in in supporting the national care service. We see it as part of the Scottish government centralising agenda. People talk about trying to retain local services, we want to retain all local services. We feel that our local staff under the direction of local government do an absolutely excellent job. Like Billy Wright, we are proud of the services and want to retain all of them. What we would, our gut reaction was just to put up a motion saying that we reject the concept of a national care service. However, we read the proposed response by officers and I congratulate them on a very well written, well argued response. And we therefore feel that we should simply, at two points in it, just make clear what we would wish the city council of you to be, which is that we're opposed to the centralisation of adult care services and urge the Scottish government to reject the proposals for such a service. And we would recommend not proceeding with the national care service proposal. I remember standing up at the time the police and fire became national services and said it will not meet its targets, it will not make the savings. Was I right or was I wrong? I was right. And the reality in this, my concern is this is the biggest change to local government services in a generation. It's very, very significant and I'm very concerned that it will be that the bluntly further dismantling of local government and the centralisation agenda, which I view as detrimental to local needs. So for that reason, we move our amendment, convener, with thanks.
Thanks very much, Billy McPherson. I'll just confirm for the record that councillor Duncan is seconding you.
Convener, yes indeed.
Thank you very much. I'll invite Bailey Scott to make comment at this stage.
Thanks convener. Well, we're fairly rushing through this and I thought it's such an important item that we're not giving it the proper airing that we should. And maybe the committee should have been organising it differently so that we all have the opportunity to speak to these. And I never got the chance to contribute to the last vote before you went to the vote. And rather than, just to say quickly, we didn't put forward a motion because I was content with the submission from the officers and the report that he had written. Because I felt that it gave a very fair minded, professional overview of the position and outlined where they thought the concerns were and the pitfalls were and what else needed to be looked at. And I thought that was a very reasoned response and we could support that. Faced with the two motions though they were put in front of us, I felt yours was reflected my views more than Fraser's one does, which is a complete blanket refusal of the whole thing. And I would have liked to have included a bit of the Labour's motion in your motion, which calls for funding to be made available now for our care services. I agree with Fraser to the extent that we should keep control of care provision locally. All the additional ones that have been added to the to the consultation haven't gone through the same stakeholder review as the adult care services did. And it's really difficult to consider something where you don't have all the information, you don't know the full costings and so on. But and there may be a place for a national care service that deals with things like standards and workforce planning and pay and such like. But the delivery of the services have to remain local. And I think the pandemic has pandemic and our response to the pandemic has shown that local is best. It's the best at responding quickly to emergencies and tailoring services to the local need. We have the local context and I think the holistic approach to care services would be lost if we weren't able to consider care services along with housing needs and employability needs and educational needs and so on. So I do think there needs to be a local element. And I quite agree with Fraser that the Scottish government doesn't have a great track record when it comes to taking control nationally of services. The fire and rescue is the case in point. So supported yours on the ground that, on the grounds that it better reflected what my view is that yes, there might be a national care service with some aspects to provide the best service. But retaining everything else locally, making sure that there was that democratic representation there, the proper oversight and overview of the services. I'm quite pragmatic though, when it comes to the best way to deliver services. And I think what we should be looking at is what's best for the person in receipt of those services. It may well be that having some aspects of care being looked at at a national level. But the delivery of it should and should all be done locally. And that was the reason why I supported your motion, convener, and will do so at the next division.
Thanks very much, Bailey Scott. The only comment I would make is you mentioned the last item, I did let you speak last on the last item, so I'm not sure what you meant, but.
No, sorry, the division that you just had between Labour and SNP.
Okay, sorry, right.
I wanted to explain what I was doing before you went to the vote, but I never got the opportunity because we're rushing through the business, which I thought the change to the committee and structures and cycles was that we wouldn't be rushing through business.
There's clearly a series of committee reports on tonight that are time critical. And I think that's clearly had an impact in terms of the timing of the meeting. But anyway, back to the substantive items, I think we've heard from elected members that wanted to have a say, although I am looking at a novocation, so please give me one second. Bailey Keenan.
Yeah, just to say that, you know, having, I think I agree with Bailey Scott that if we'd had that opportunity to debate in a body more depth, perhaps we would have been able to reach some closer compromise. Because my intention was that local government would have the ultimate say in a national care service in the words that be put forward. However, you know, I'm unlikely to support Bailey McPherson's, so probably no vote on it. But we will take into account what Bailey Scott said when we put forward our own submission. Because I realised that, you know, you don't have to necessarily stick to the council's position on it.
Thanks very much, Bailey Keenan. I'm just going to simply make one reminder to elected members that the chat function is not for making comment. It is for notifying the convener that you want to ask a question or make a comment. So can members please remember that it is not another opportunity to make a comment or ask a question? And with that said, and I'll simply move to the vote in a moment. I think it's important, given that we are all Democrats, we are all elected members, to say that the SNP stood on a manifesto commitment of delivering a national care service, as did of course the Labour Party as well. And I think opposition members on this call would be the first to criticise the Scottish government had they not delivered or set out their intentions to deliver a national care service. So I don't think it's a legitimate kind of line to criticise a government who was elected on a mandate to create a service that they are now creating the service. And I would simply make the point that this is democracy in action and this is a manifesto commitment being delivered on the back of an election success. And with that, I will move to the vote. And it is obviously the previous amendment moved by myself, the motion versus Bailey McPherson's, which we've already heard. So Veronica.
The motion by the convener and seconded by Bailey Sawyers is that the report be approved subject to the additional recommendations previously circulated. The amendment by Bailey McPherson, seconded by councillor Duncan, has also been circulated. Convenor.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
Councillor Cordell.
Motion.
Councillor Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Flynn.
The motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Rendall.
Motion.
Billy Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Bailey Sawyers.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
No vote.
Councillor McGrady.
No vote.
Councillor McIrvin.
No vote.
Councillor Mara.
No vote.
Councillor Richardson.
No vote.
Bailey Wright.
No vote.
Bailey Scott.
Motion.
Councillor Hay.
Motion.
Councillor Scott.
Motion.
Bailey McPherson.
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
Councillor Murray.
The motion.
Councillor Ross.
Motion.
Seventeen for the amendment, beg your pardon, seventeen for the motion and two for the amendment.
Okay, thanks very much, we'll move on to the next item, Veronica.
Item four, accommodation for adults with additional specification requirement, Long Hall project. You are asked for approval for this item.
I think this will be broadly welcomed, an important investment in eight new flats at Long Hall to support individuals who need extra support and may well have disabilities. And there's obviously additional requirements alongside this investment and this will be funded to the tune of one hundred twenty nine thousand eight hundred pounds. Is there any questions or comments on this? No, can that be agreed? Thank you very much.
Item five, Her Majesty, the Queen's Platinum Jubilee. Your approval is asked for this item.
Obviously we discussed children and families, I'll take this as agreed if nobody has any questions or comments. Thank you very much.
Item six, capital expenditure monitoring, twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two, you have the report before you.
Self exploratory, any questions, comments? Okay, can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much.
Item seven, revenue monitoring, twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two, the report is before you.
Again, detailed summary within the report, any specific questions? No, can this item be agreed? Thank you very much.
Item eight, annual treasury management activity. This is for approval.
Okay, again, questions, comments? None? Silence is agreement? This is agreed? Thanking you again.
Item nine, corporate IT storage upgrade. Your approval is requested.
These items might at one point have seemed less important, but given our reliance on IT and technology these days, clearly an important item on the agenda. Any questions, comments? No? Can that be agreed? Thank you very much.
The following item is confidential. Do you wish to deal with this in the usual way or do you want members of the public to leave the meeting?
I would like the public to leave the meeting because I would like to discuss the item.
Okay, thanks, Bailey Keenan. So if we can just have all members of the public and press leave the meeting at this point. Roger.
Thank you, convener. If all members of the press and public could please leave the meeting at this point, committee services will confirm when the meeting can reconvene.
Thank you all for your participation and your stamina. We shall see you all again soon. Good night. Thanks.